Welcome, everybody. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. Madam Clerk, may I have the roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. We will now have a silent prayer followed by the flag salute. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.zaccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, March 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, March 25th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is agenda approvals, additions and/or deletions. Does the council have any? Seeing none, I move on to presentations. First subject is proclamation, Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month by Mayor Vandenberg. No. Sorry, your name again, gentlemen and sir. Dan Shockley. You did not, you're the one that requested this and usually we present it there with you, correct? So that's what I'll... So in honor of Colon Cancer Awareness Month, whereas colorectal cancer is the second leading cause of cancer death in the United States among men and women combined, whereas colon cancer is one of the few cancers that can be prevented with timely screening by... But, one in three eligible Americans are not up to date on their screenings, whereas colorectal cancer is estimated to be the number one cancer killer of those ages 20 through 49 by 2023, 2030, excuse me. Whereas black Americans are 20% more likely to be diagnosed with colorectal cancer and about 40% more likely to die from this disease than other groups. Whereas colorectal cancer is expected to account for 11% of cancer deaths among Hispanic men and 9% of cancer deaths for Hispanic women. And whereas screening colon cancer, colonoscopy rates have still not returned pre-COVID-19 levels, whereas the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase these timely colorectal cancer screenings rates to 80% in every community for all Americans eligible for screening. Whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and other education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer. So I present that to you. Do you have any words to say?
Absolutely.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, the city council members and Supervisor Pat Hume, just want to say this is an honor on behalf of the Fight Colorectal Cancer Organization. This is my 10th year representing the organization. 11 years ago, I was diagnosed with a hereditary colon cancer syndrome. So I'm a colon cancer survivor. Many of you remember I have an ostomy awareness proclamation and I have, my hereditary colon cancer syndrome is also a rare disease. So I guess you can call me a triple threat. But it's an honor to represent the community and I can say that early detection is the key. I'm living proof. I had been diagnosed after my first and only colonoscopy 11 years ago with this hereditary colon cancer syndrome. Preventative measures is why I'm here today. So thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure. I just came down here to, first of all, if those don't know me, Pat Hume, newly elected county supervisor, which I know that's a sore subject down here in Galt, but your guy had a good run. He did it for 28 years and so Don is a great friend. But I just came down to support another great friend, Dan Shockley here. Dry Doc, he has served our country admirably. He has fought, as he said, this, his health journey, I'll call it, has been twisting and turning and he's just a heck of a nice guy. And so he mentioned he was getting this proclamation tonight and I thought I could make the drive down here and show him that there are people in his corner rooting for him to continue his journey. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I'm glad you had to read that proclamation.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and our city staff. My name is Ralph Cortez, representing the Galt Community of Character Coalition. We're a community-based nonprofit organization. Our focus is inspiring, promoting and recognizing good character in our community and telling the stories of people and organizations who strengthen our community with their positive actions. A survey of our Galt residents in 2007 determined Galt's six top character traits, which we continue to recognize, January, February, January, February, integrity, March, April, honesty, May, June, respect, July, August, pride and community, September, October, responsibility, and November, December, caring and compassion. Among some of our 2007 founding members, Barbara Payne, Sue Roberts, Tom Gima, Glenna Robinson, Al Baldwin, Tony Lara, Reverend Mary Sanders, Dave Goldsberry, Joe Rebio, Dorothy Merkins, Patricia St. James, Mary Martinez, and representatives of our school districts, faith-based groups, the business community, City of Galt representatives and ordinary people who wanted to make doing the right thing the norm that we all follow, whether we're a student in school, a business owner, or anyone living in Galt. For tonight's presentation, our 2023 Integrity Award goes to Manuel and Linda Limon. Manuel and Linda Limon exemplify the meaning of the word integrity. Two years ago, when their neighbor began moving in next door, they came over and immediately got busy and helped him unpack. When they found out that their new neighbor was an 81-year-old disabled veteran, they came back many, many times to help with various projects that needed attention and made his life easier. Manuel and Linda Limon demonstrate that they can be counted on to get involved and do the right thing even when it may not be convenient. When people can trust you and always keep your word, do the right thing, you're a person of integrity. Manuel and Linda Limon are true role models of integrity. And this was, they were nominated by Kent Pierce. Gentleman over there. And I believe Linda is, was not able to make it tonight, but Manuel's here. Give you there. Absolutely. I'm going to take pictures outside.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, could you now read the public comment statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. And we have three public comments.
Thank you.
First one, Greg Davidson.
town of Galt. I come before you again tonight to get some clarification on some of the comments that have been in the Galt Herald letters to the editor, and I haven't been able to find them anywhere else. So I was hoping that the city manager could give an update at the end of the evening as well as the council members. In this letter on March 1st paper, it was stated that HDL Consulting had done a survey and their projections were for a cannabis dispensary in Galt to generate from $340,000 to $460,000. So $400,000 would be the middle range. And I literally at home just spitballed on the back of an envelope here what we could do with that money. We could take $400,000 and divide it in equal amounts, $100,000 to fund the visitors' Visit Galt proposal, which I know is ongoing right now and I'm fully behind. Second, we could take $100,000 and use it for the teen center programs, which I know they would be happy to have that funding. Number three is something, and sorry that Bob isn't here this evening, $100,000 for senior center programs. I know that those are needed as well in Galt. And fourth and finally, $100,000 to fund the youth sports programs. I know that it's very hard for families that have a lot of children to pay full ride and perhaps the city could come up with a way to use that $100,000 spread out to lessen the burden on those folks. So I was hoping at the end of the evening that Mr. Heinz could give an update on that. And in open council session, Councilmember Papino shared with us that he had done his due diligence and had visited Davis Cannabis Collective, which you'll remember is the cannabis collective that I shared my receipt with you to show you the type of money that we're leaving to other communities. I would like an update from the council members, if possible, what form of diligence they have done outside of Councilmember Papino. Thank you very much for your time and I look forward to your comments at the end of the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. We can't address you directly, but I would say in general to everyone in the public that anytime you have a question, you can email the city manager or any of the city council members to ask that question to get it answered, as well as city staff. It's, everything you need is on the city website. Next speaker, please.
Wesley Kagle.
I didn't want to put what organization because I belong to quite a few organizations here in town, but I'm here to focus on the sports fields. And personally, hopefully the rest of organizations will show up at future meetings. But personally, I'm frustrated with the handling of the sports fields and how Galt Youth Baseball, in my opinion, was given a bad hand slap by you, Jay. As a past president of Galt Youth Baseball and the time and the resources that Galt Youth Baseball has put into these fields, the MOU we have with the city, and I used to be a park commissioner, there's paperwork in the parks commission of how the fields are supposed to be dealt with, right? And we are still dealing with something that I believe we should not have been, it should not have been dealt the way you dealt with it. The frustration part is, in the parks, there is the private organizations, it has an order of how things are done. The rec comes before the private organizations. So I don't understand how people could come up here complaining and all of a sudden you wanted to change something like that. There's a process of doing things. I just, I don't agree with the way it's been handled. The other thing I'm going to say is, like I said with the Galt Youth Baseball, when the Parks and Rec was on hard times, Galt Youth Baseball stood up, raised funds and took care of these fields for you guys. I was there. I've seen it. I've worked on the fields myself and I just, I don't understand. I would like to meet with you when we get a chance, if I email you, so we can talk some more about this. Because like I said, I've been frustrated for a while, what I've been reading in the papers, and I just think that with a MOU signed and the way that things are in the Parks and Rec, I'm still baffled of why we had to give up space when it's not supposed to be that way. So in the future, I can get your email and do whatever, but I'd like to discuss this with you in further details. Hopefully the, some members of Galt Youth Baseball will start showing up, being here. Some other things I'd like to point out is like, Galt Youth Baseball this last summer threw on an amazing tournament. We had a team from out of country come in. Sean was there. Sean threw out the first pitch. We had plenty of teams from outside of this area, from central California, northern California, they come up, they spent tens of thousands of dollars in this city, right? So Galt Youth Baseball is for the city. Galt Youth Baseball is for the kids. We are not an exclusive organization. We are an inclusive organization, right? So if a kid signs up, a kid gets to play. I'm part of travel ball organizations too. Travel ball organizations are exclusive. If you try out and you're not good enough, you don't get to be on that team. So there's kids in this city who I'm sure have tried out for these travel ball organizations and are not on those teams. They go to Galt Youth Baseball, guess what? They're playing. That's what we want. We want our kids playing. So nothing against these travel ball organizations, because like I said, I've been a part of it. It's, you want to be competitive, you want to do all that. But we're talking about the youth in this town, we want them to participate, we want them to play. Galt Youth Baseball provides that major opportunity, just like Parks and Rec basketball, right? It's an organization that provides plenty of opportunity for these kids to play. And the same thing, they rely on the school district for their practices. They get to play at the high school, right? Once again, is the only, Parks and Rec's only facility is that Jibola Center over there for basketball. You can't help hold all those games. So guess what? The elementary district, high school district, they form, and they form a bond with you guys. They let the Parks and Rec use their facilities. Now, what would happen if we said, hey, you guys can't use our facilities because this private unit came in and now they want to use our facility? It's not fair, right? So I'm just, as you can tell, I'm frustrated.
That's perfectly understandable and I'm glad you came here to speak. Right there is my card, so I'd be happy to talk with you. I really wish I could address that right now, but I'm not supposed to, so I won't. I just, again, I'll thank you for your comments and I really appreciate it and I like it when people come up and talk to everybody all at the same time. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, council members. I appreciate it.
Harry Wenzel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. I'll just be brief. There's a bill coming up before the legislature in Sacramento, which would limit the use of canines. We have a big investment in canines. We have professional staff on our police and I just wanted to bring this up. You know, as a citizen, I'm always concerned when you have something good going on and then Sacramento wants to limit, say like a little city like ours. I mean, our police do a wonderful job and the canine is one of the tools. And so perhaps that's worth a discussion somewhere within the city and with the chief and at least go on record, if we need to, that, you know, if it's a safety issue for our citizens or our police, then I think the legislature should know that. We should have a voice up in Sacramento. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Next is reports by city council members, regional boards, commissions and committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papino.
I don't have anything to report either.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
Yes, I attended the CAST meeting last Monday, I believe it was last Monday. Mayor Vandenberg was present as well, city manager, and our community development director, Craig Hoffman, and his staff. And it was a very eye-opening meeting, I would say. For those of you who are not aware, CAST is the cities and schools together, so we meet, I think it's every two months, every three months, with the school superintendents from both districts, our elected officials from those districts, two members of city council and probably 10 people in that meeting. And we, the purpose is to basically, you know, work together is between the district and the city to come up with things that we need to be working on together, share ideas, so on and so forth. Some of the things we talked about in there were the, we got some safety updates, which were very good, very happy to hear. We kind of did a kind of an emergency get-together a few months ago to talk about, you know, just to revisit protocols for the schools in light of some of the mass shootings that had happened in other states. And so I was very happy to, you know, have those conversations and happy to hear those updates. Also, we talked about declining the school enrollment, which was the eye-opening part of the conversation. And I think for those that are only focused on this ideology that Galt's growing too fast and we're going to become the next Del Grove and so on and so forth, the fact to learn that we're declining enrollment in both of our districts to a point where we've recently cut programs, I hear from the last school board meeting, foreign languages have been cut, other programs have been cut, there's talk about staff possibly leaving, and there's some other detrimental decisions that could be made in the next couple of years if those numbers come to fruition. And we don't know really what to do to reverse it, you know, it's just different generations not having as many kids, other factors, private school, people leaving the state, you know, many, many things contribute, but some of those factors were really, you know, caught me off guard. I wasn't realizing that we were kind of in that position. So schools get their money from enrollment. And so anyways, it was a very good meeting. I know it's not televised or anything for someone to watch it back, but if anyone wants to reach out to me or their school board representatives and inquire about these kinds of things, I think it's information that a lot of citizens should know about, especially those that are parents out there. So anyways, that's all I wanted to share from that meeting and with that, that's all I have tonight. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I had a SAICOG board meeting on the 16th and went over quite a few things, but just to highlight, our first funding recommendations from the Green Means Go funding was approved by the board as well as about $45 million in active transportation program funding for the region. We also had a workshop on road tolling and what that does to different areas of the state and how it's managed and used. And then a specific study that was done on the Yellow Cause Way about tolling and whether they're going to make some decisions based on that study. So it'll be interesting as that all unfolds. Again, we're going to be talking about the blueprint, which is our transportation planning for the next three or four years. And so we need to, in that time, we're going to come up with some plans regionally on how transportation's going to be funded. And so that is always on the top of everybody's list of how that, how transportation and housing interface with each other and what we're going to do planning-wise going forward. Second meeting that I want to report on is the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee meeting for the League of California Cities. We had an update on the policy committee work plan, which was approved for this year. And then the city manager's sales tax working group had, gave us an update on, the city managers have a group within the organization that are working on tax sharing agreements and things like that and how that affects different communities and what the policy's going to be moving forward. They've asked all of the jurisdictions to do a survey on what sales tax sharing agreements they have. And so I passed that on to staff. And then we talked about advocacy updates and what is, what we're looking at in that area. I think I reported on it before, but the Cal Cities is asking the state for permanent funding for reimbursed expenses on state mandated programs that states have, or that cities have implemented. And don't know how far that'll go, but we're certainly interested in helping push that forward. And then last, we heard from the chief investment officer from CalPERS and what their investment schemes are and how often they reevaluate that. And that's about every three or four years. And so how that affects us is we're required to pay into that system for employees and then employees pay a portion into that as well. And how well they do is based on how much money we pay. And so we always want them to do well. But one of the topics that was brought up is divesting in companies and types of services But one of the topics that was brought up is divesting in companies and types of services that are out there. And it's not as easy as it sounds. You may have heard about that in the news, but to divest in a company or type of company really will affect how the fund is funded over a long period of time. And so as they try to keep everything diversified, it's when they're hit with, you know, requests to not invest in certain companies or businesses, it makes it tough. And so it's not as easy as it sounds. And what I got from it was, hey, you know what? We get those requests regularly, but we're unable to follow through with those requests because of the way our system's set up. So that is about all I have. I know the chief was on that call as well, and chief, is there anything that you would add to that meeting? It was quite a long one.
Yes, it was. One of the longer ones, but no, I think you covered everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I was also at the cast meeting. I think Councilman Farmer covered that quite well. I attended the youth commission meeting. They are still looking for donations for their April 1st fundraiser, so please help them if you can. Also attended the Sacramento homeless policy. I was actually pleasantly surprised by, well, they put out a ton of numbers, but they're actually more effective than I think most people believe. You may not feel it here locally, but they are doing good things, and there's a big need for better education probably statewide. And lastly, Congressman Matt Su was here this week. It was very pleasant to speak with her. It was very nice to see her not want to dictate to us, but rather she listened to us, she took notes, and she was looking to help us where she could in the direction the city wants to go. So that was quite refreshing considering the way the state normally pushes down on us. With that, we'll move on to the information consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 7 be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Does any of the council members have any of those requests?
I'd like to make a note on the March 7 minutes before voting.
Okay.
Please note that in the March 7 minutes, under the chamber's presentation, city attorney's comments should state "could be deemed void" instead of "would be" and will be changed
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull, I'd like to pull item F7, please.
Okay, we'll pull item F7. On the minute, where was that on the minutes, please?
Under the chamber's presentation, the attorney's comments.
Okay.
It's like third, third from the top, fourth from the top.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other actions, then is there a public comment on any of these items?
No public comment.
Thank you. With that, receive a file warrants for period ending March 8, 2023. Minutes of the regular meeting for March 7 as amended, 2023. Treasury report for period ending February 2023. A Street Lift Station Rehabilitation Project, CHIP 58K Engineering Service Agreement Award, SEQA exempt, 1530I1C. Award a construction contract for Vintage Oak Lift Station Upgrades Project, CHIP 58K, SEQA exempt, 15301C. Award contract for material and insulation of new turf for the Walker Community Park Turf Replacement Project, CHIP 624D, SEQA exempt, 15301C. Do I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Papinow. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Next, we will look at subject 7, or F7, Audit Contract Renewal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for not inquiring on some of this earlier. I actually sent a lot of emails out today for various things on here, and I appreciate all the staff's responses on those other items so that I could get clarification. On this particular item, I pulled it because I just kind of want to understand, so this is the contract renewal with LSL for audit services, and I remember we had this discussion, I think as a council, oh gosh, it was, it might have been, I think it was back in 18 or 19, I can't recall exactly, but, and there was a discussion about how often cities should change their auditors. And it was, it was, it was said that it was, you know, five years was kind of the mark where we should change, just, it was like procedure to do that. And so obviously, we are at a five-year mark now with the current one. We had a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. And so again, these are the people that look at our finances and audit us, and there were several reasons discussed why that's a good idea to change. But we're being asked tonight to renew with the existing for another three years. And so my, I just, I was, I just had some concerns, so I just want to be clear. So, Mr. Heinz, the purpose for this is that we have a young, I don't mean young by age, but I mean new to the city finance staff, and your concern with changing to a different firm at this moment would be disruptive. You want to just elaborate a little bit, please?
I'm going to let Finance Director Matt Boring elaborate.
Yeah, we're reviewing the best practices from the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, and in those, they don't have a recommended amount of time that you should change your auditors. They recommend at least a minimum five-year contract with the auditors because there's a lot of startup expenses, and whenever you change auditors, there's a lot of work, working with your previous auditors and the new auditors to get everything set up in their system. And then it's not required that you change auditors typically after your contract. At some point, they want you to do an RFP, so you get a proposal from new auditors, and depending on the location of your agency and the size of your agency, it could happen that you don't get proposals from a new audit firm. So if you're going to continue using the same audit firm, they continue, they recommend changing the key audit staff from that firm, so usually the partner and your audit manager. And I'm not sure if I noted it in the staff report, but we have had a change in the audit partner that manages our contract with LSL, and we have new audit managers that were assigned to our city for fiscal year '22.
Okay, so yeah, I don't remember reading that. That would be nice to know.
And the staff, like our primary lead for audit, the staff have been in those current roles for, I believe the longest one is 18 months, and the most recent one is probably about six months now. So a lot of them haven't gone through a full audit cycle in their current responsibilities, so giving them a couple extra years, especially with some of the new GASP implementations we have to do, would be beneficial before we onboard new auditors.
Okay. And I do understand, you know, dealing with the same company because there's a relationship that's built, and it can really streamline things, and, you know, them being familiar with our city, obviously, there's, I could go on and on, there's probably many advantages to doing that. I only brought it up because, and I know it wasn't told to us, if I recall, that it was mandatory, it was just something that, again, was talked about. I think what you mentioned a minute ago was the fact that, you know, sometimes we get comfortable with relationships with different firms, or whether it's consultants or whatever, and for that comfort level, we want to continue with them for the reasons I just mentioned. But also, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, we're the custodians of the taxpayer dollar, too, and sometimes, you know, making sure that we're getting the best value or the best price is important, too. It's important to the citizens, and I think that, you know, that way, we need to, you know, there's a reason why we revisit things time to time. But I do understand the reasoning behind what you're asking, and I know, and I'm not looking to rock the boat, I just wanted to point that out. And then also, too, that there was a mention in the staff report that the reason that, one of the reasons why we were asking being to continue with these, with this firm, too, was that to pull them right now or whatever would disrupt our audit. One thing I don't like in staff reports, I just want to throw this out there, is I don't, and I don't think, by no means done intentionally, I'm just saying, this is just brought, but I don't like when staff reports are given where it says, well, we can't do this because it's going to disrupt whatever. I think that's poor planning. I mean, I don't like being put up against a decision saying, well, we can't do this because of the timing, you know, or et cetera, et cetera. There's a reason, there's a time and a place for that because of costs or whatever, but I don't like being, you know, that being leveraged. So I think in the future, you know, if we're going to be between audits or there's going to be timing, could be better about revisiting, like, hey, this contract's going to be up in six months. So, you know, if the council should entertain maybe going out to RFP, we would be able to do that without being in a position where we're going to compromise the, you know, financial work. So I appreciate your information, Matt, and that's all the questions I had regarding this item. So with that, I would move to approve item L7, or F7, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Item F7, Audit Contract Renewal, moved by Councilman Farmer. Is there a second?
Public comment.
Public comment, please, and thank you. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No public comment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next is scheduled matters of public hearing. Doesn't look like there's any. Then we move on to regular calendar items. First up is Police Department, subject called Police Department Annual Report. Kalanowski.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, yesterday, we aggressively got you out the first version of our annual report, and as I prepared the, my speech for you tonight, I recognized we had an error, and that's due to changing the staff and the methodology for pulling traffic numbers, and that is my fault that I did not catch that. So we did some work to get the right version out to you, and that should be on your dius this evening. So that is the accurate information which we are living and dying by tonight. So with that, I want to acknowledge our staff who did the lion's share of this work, virtually all the work, the graphics, different things that you see in this presentation are a reflection of the pride that the members have in the organization and wanting to present the work that they've done this last year in the most positive light. I will also tell you, since I've worked at Galt, there were times we probably wouldn't put a police car on our annual report based on the conditions of the cars, but, you know, a lot of work has been done to upgrade our equipment, and so it gets front page this year, so I want that to be noted. So with that, thank you. So we will start, there's a message from me. I guess I would tell the audience that this week we'll be putting a link on our social media and ultimately our website to this annual report, so you can spend time looking at it if you wish. We will have limited hard copies shortly on the same thing for council and other key staff. But nevertheless, there's a short message from me, and ultimately, it thanks the department for the work that they've done. And as a department, I'll just say the closing piece here, we recognize it takes not only the members of my organization, but the city staff, the council that I just mentioned, local business, and the community at large to ensure we're successful as a department. And we want to take that moment, I want to take that moment as the chief, on behalf of the members of the organization, to thank all those participants for your support this last year. Every annual report should have a foundation for the history of the organization they serve, and so that's our great American little town, and there's some history that we provided in there. Moving over to the organizational chart, that's important. You see that organizational chart this year because, as you know, you've took, you've taken, excuse me, actions in the past year, year and a half to reorganize the department so we are able to better function, serve the community, and provide a platform for succession planning internally in the organization over the long term. And so that looks like how the organization looks now is, you know, I'm the chief of police, my captain, Rick Small, reports directly to me, I'm my executive assistant and professional standards officer, and then below that, I have both lieutenants who operate each side of the department, one in support services, one in operations, and then my executive assistant. And then you can see on there that support services has investigations, dispatch, and records, and those associated duties and responsibilities, and then patrol has, operations has, which you would expect to be patrol, and some collateral duties within that. So 2022, this is staff-written, it was a year of growth and positive change for the Galt Police Department. We had, and we'll talk about those new hires in a minute, we had multiple promotions, which are unheard of here in Galt, and implementation of many new items in the organization with technology. We established an internal leadership program. We restarted our bike unit. We have the drone program, and we expanded our social media platform and the team that serves that, along with other important internal operational pieces like our peer support program that we got up and running in late of 2021, and those projects continue. Our community engagement is important, and so that remained our priority in addition to obviously traditional public safety. And so we supported the National Night Out, Coffee with a Cop. We did our first fill-the-patrol-car drive. I think it was two and a half patrol cars were filled with toys out in front of Walmart this year. And then we hosted our holiday open house. Again, that allows us to deepen our relationships within the community, and we continue to work to be a regional leader in community partnerships. So into our statistics, I'll remind you that in 2020, we got to live, it still feels like we're living through it, and I still have staff with it, but we had COVID in 2020 and into 2021, but what you see is a three-year run of our statistics, and so you see a slight uptick in total incidents in 2022. It's about 11% more incidents at 23,350. Our calls for service were up slightly. Our officer-initiated activities were up 30%. So my hat's off to the organization for digging deep and working harder. Traffic stops were up about 5%. Our misdemeanor arrests were down, along with, I'm going to skip over, our criminal citations. Generally, many of our misdemeanor arrests are citations at site release in the field, so those are going to correspond and go down accordingly, and we had an additional 30 felony arrests during the year. On the traffic side, again, in 2020, you see how we've built, kind of back to the new normal. In 2022, we had a total collisions of 272, which was up 5%. Our hit-and-run property damage only were up 4.1%. The first version you saw, I thought, I think showed 71 or 72. Every so often, and the reason why some of these changes, so you have the backstory, is sometimes we'll get detailed to a call, and they determine they don't need a police report for whatever reason, and they exchange information or something like that, and we had not pulled that information forward in these current year stats. And so that's why the first version on property damage only, you saw a number of 69. That's the number of police reports we wrote in related, in relationship to property damage only. However, there were many cases where they exchanged information and went on their way, that number being 136. I think it's important that we carry the full number of the things that we're aware of, and so 136 is what carries for your property damage only. Injury collisions were up significantly, significantly at 83%. And then with minor injuries, that number is the total account of injuries that occur for people riding in the vehicle. So if it's a solo vehicle, minor injury, complaint of pain, for example, that'll be one, but if there's two people in the car and they both complain of pain, that's how you get two or multiples. So that's going to be consistent with, if not more, and you see that reflected in the minor injuries. Major injuries stayed consistent, fatal stayed consistent. Somebody may say, what fatal was that? That's the one that was out at Cherokee and Twin Cities, right on the city limits, so that was where that is. DUI collisions maintained consistency, caused by juvenile, down slightly. Total traffic citations were up 50%, so whereas we did see an increase in injury accidents, the organization wrote 50% more total traffic citations, and 33% of those being moving violations, that was the increase in citations. violations. That was the increase in citations on moving violations specifically. And those numbers are reflected there. The next page, you will see, it doesn't look as nice as my copy, so I apologize. But the yellow are going to be one-time incidents. And then where you start to see a darker orange or even red, that's reflective of multiple incidences at one location. This is going to be injury collisions in the city. And if you go back, I think my number was 55. There's numbers dancing in my head, so I don't remember them all. Yes. And so that is the sum total of those in the locations. And then you can see A Street at 99, we've had increased accidents there. That's a multi-year issue. And then you've seen some at Lincoln and, and Elm in that area is another hotspot for us for injury TCs. So, and then the rest are just spread throughout the community, as you can see. And again, if it's just green, that's really going to be one. If you start to see orange or slight orange, that's going to be two, and the red is going to be really three or more, based on our numbers that we have here. And if you look at total collision maps, that's going to tell you where most of our collisions occur. And so, like last year, up at Walmart, we get a lot of property damage only backing incidents and other things that happen in the parking lots, and that carries over onto the rallye side, as you can see. So there's a lot of that activity that goes on in those parking lots. And then if you look down to the south, you're going to see that at Safemark, maybe slightly over into Galt High School, IGA, some of those areas there that you're going to see a lot of that activity, in addition to the main roadways. But where you get high-volume activity is where you're going to see a lot of those property damage. The difference between the two maps is this is all accidents. The first one was just your injury accidents. If you see things that are outside the city, we took courtesy reports. So it looks like up in Harold, we took one on behalf of somebody, perhaps a resident or something, and took care of them. It still shows on the map, but obviously, we don't patrol Harold. So that's just if somebody was wondering why it went so far outside the city. Going on to our traditional crime statistics, and looking at the numbers, there's a criminal homicide carried at, at one. That's a case on 2022, is a McFarland incident. Again, I highlight the most severe things because folks usually ask about those. That case was with the district attorney, district attorney's office as I speak, but we do not have anything final on that. Rapes were up slightly, or reported rapes, excuse me. Robberies were up slightly. Assaults is where we saw the biggest increase. Those assaults can be battery, you know, domestic violence, simple battery, person-on-person, those kinds of things. And then they're all significant, but the things involving like cutting instruments and firearms are broken out separately. And you can see where those numbers land, slight uptick on firearm, and then a slight decrease in knives, basically, cutting instruments. Burglaries are staying within the track. The five-year timeline gives you, you know, sort of the ebbs and flows of, you know, how, how it looks. Larceny, which is your theft, is up just, you know, five. And then motor vehicle theft is up from 2021. But if you look across the board at the numbers, it really is, I think I averaged it out, it's, including this year, it'd be 43.5. We ended up at 44. So it's, zero is the perfect number, but it's, you know, it's an increase from 2021, but down from 2020 is an example. Moving forward, cases forward, these are investigations that detectives did during the year. I have, I should have four, I only have three. Well, generally, I only have three assigned to have a temporary assignment going on, but four detectives and a detective sergeant assigned to investigations. So they processed 263 of those cases. They also take the online reports. There's times where you need to file a lost cell phone or something, you know, very low level, but you need a case number in some way from the organization. And at three in the morning, you want to file that report and not have us come bother you. That's one way folks can do it. And they submitted 64 of those during the year. This shows you animal control. The numbers look similar, or similar to what you saw in my staff report. This is, my staff report showed like animals housed was like 210 or 215. That was on the fiscal. This is on the calendar. That's why you see a slightly different number. But that shows you our activity. And then it was only two weeks ago, which sometimes feels like two months ago. We did approve the animal control contract. So we're moving forward on that. We have final signatures here. So it's going to the county. So that's where we ended up with animal control. Graffiti abatement. We, we capture the cost for Measure R cost for the police department in my annual report. I don't capture citywide cost. You see an increase in graffiti. And many of you remember how we got hit in sort of the southwest portion of town over two or three weeks. And it took 20 and 30 graffiti reports during that time period around cost and tutor in those areas. This is a direct result of a majority of that activity. Some of it was handled by the homeowner, some was handled by perhaps lighting and landscaping or the city's general fund. And then you see the numbers, 2021 was nearly 12,000 costs covered by Measure R and 10,000 in 2022. So that's where we're at on graffiti abatement. Dispatch, they continue to do good work. That's the number of calls they received at the comm center. How many 911 calls they received, and our answer time are all within the expectations for a 911 center. So staff continues to do well in that regard. Firearms seizures, this is broken up a little, I guess you can see it pretty well. You can see, you know, we had four ghost guns, you know, that's been a thing where, you know, these guns with, that are nonserialized manufactured in the home. We see a slight uptick with that. Galt only had four, other jurisdictions seem any more than that. But within all this body of work, that, that totals 117 firearms we processed through our evidence unit. And so, you know, you see 21 crime guns, but then you see 37 for safekeeping and different reasons why we had those. The drug seized, you'll see fentanyl is now the other. It can be a multitude of things or, and I'm actually not even sure what those, those may be. But fentanyl is starting to be more of a presence. We've talked about that often. We had 18 of those cases where we seized fentanyl in a community. Methamphetamine still continues to be the biggest drug of choice. And then you see the others that we've had. Professional standards unit, we're required to report our activity in this regard. So our use of force incidents were 18. All were found within policy. We had 10 vehicle pursuits. All 10 were found within policy. There's a review component to each of these incidents that go through the chain of command, starting with a sergeant and vetted through the captain. And so those are the results of that. Our internal complaints, we had four. External complaints, we had four, which resulted in two internal affairs investigations that had outcomes of, both were sustained violations in some manner. If you look down, the percentage of contacts resulting in use of force were 0.08%. And the percentage of traffic stops resulting in pursuits are 0.39%. Those are all within what I would expect to be reasonable. I just happened to see Antioch yesterday. They had 76,000 incidents, and they had 0.84 for their use of force. So that percentage in, you know, a larger organization with, you know, basically more than three times the events had the similar ratio. So that's what you have there. Here are our new hires. As you can see, we hired five officers in 2022. We hired two CSOs. We hired a dispatcher. And then my executive assistant, Wendy, is who we onboarded. Interestingly enough, our CSO, Alex, is going to start the police academy at Delta College here in May. So he's going to go to a police recruit position. But that was the genesis and the dialogue that I had about that CSO program and the vision we have for that and bringing people into the organization and then getting them to take that next step. So we're excited about that. We do have two other people we're looking at for the Sacramento Academy, starting in June. And they're in their final phases of the background process. So, you know, we potentially will have three going to the academy, but there'll be more to come on that. Our employee awards, all the council was there for that activity. And again, these are the folks that were recognized by the department members, voted these folks in based on criteria established in our department policy. So Sergeant Mark Fuel, who was promoted this year, was Officer of the Year. Our dispatcher was Laura Satello. Our civilian staff was Ryan West, and Byron was our Volunteer of the Year. The employee awards that you also all saw, mostly related to life-saving awards. A lot of those are related to overdose cases. But the staff is always ready and willing to step in and assist CSD in those. And sometimes we're first on scene. And so you saw a lot of that in our award ceremony. And obviously, we were able to honor Capri Herrera, who was honored the prior summer for her actions or her involvement in the accident. So that was good. And last but not least, or almost last but not least, I promised Armando at least 20 minutes. Captain Rick Small, Lieutenant Brian Azavida, Lieutenant Rocha were promoted into their positions this year. And then Sergeant Rod Fisher, Kyle Slater, and Mark Fuel were promoted to sergeant. That is the biggest move this organization has seen in essentially forever. We're testing currently for sergeants' positions for a new list as we expect, well, we'll have at least one promotion. And depending on how things go, there may be more than that. So more to come on that, but we continue in that process. And then lastly, we were able to recognize Sergeant Craig Walton and his 30 years of service. And then Copper, who did four years with Kyle Slater as a K-9. Kyle, that's Kyle's personal dog. Kyle, on his own time, trained Copper to be a service dog in the police organization for Galt for four years. And so we're proud of his efforts. And we recognize Copper. And then, not last, certainly not least, how about that? Last but not least, our volunteer program with caps. This is a picture from our holiday event. In 2022, volunteered a total of 3,760 hours. And then because of COVID, that is the most hours that had been donated to the organization since 2019. And so we have a number of new folks in the organization because some folks have rotated out. That does happen. But again, we do appreciate their support. And then last but not least, again, said that twice, our community outreach. We'd encourage people to join us on your favorite social media platform. Our organization has done a lot of work to be on Instagram and Facebook and engage with the community. We also on TikTok and Twitter and all those others. But the team led by Corporal Hanson and supported by Officer Little and Tatiana, our dispatcher, have done an excellent job in that regard. And then we'll never close the presentation without recognizing our fallen. Can't do it every time. So there you have our report. I'm available to answer any questions related to traffic because I'm certain that's going to be the first question. So have at it.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions from the council?
Yeah, I'll kick it off.
Councilman Farmer?
Thank you, Chief, for presentation. Are we going to get one of the fancy ones that were printed?
Yes.
Okay.
However, you would have had it tonight if I didn't have numbers changes. So the print shop is working hard to make it-
I drew all over it, so I didn't want to do that on the next-
Right, right. Fair enough.
Um, I just want, just a couple of things. I, I wanted to say that seeing the traffic stops up, obviously, you know, it's close to my heart because I always, you know, beating the drum about traffic. Can you just clarify a little bit for me, offer, also, also for, officer-initiated, meaning, is this like just proactivity mainly, or what, how would you?
Yeah. So that's going to be everything from a security check at a building in the middle of the night and rattling the door to a community-oriented policing event like going to coffee with a cop, to traffic stops, to probation searches, to search warrants. It, it's everything self-initiated that's not detailed.
Okay. And then I, DUI collisions, obviously, I mean, I know that we have an issue with, with DUI in Galt. I know that we have many of our officers get honored for a lot of DUI arrests. So I think you guys are super proactive on that. I think it's just the nature of a small town. People think they could, you know, oh, I just live two blocks, I can drive home. I think that's really kind of the cause. And we don't have like a lot of Ubers and things in Galt too. So I don't think those stats are going to go down anytime soon. On page, let's see, on the crime stats, UCR, explain that to me. That's not, these are not our stats. These are-
No, these are our stats that we report, and they're, UCR's switching to another reporting platform. But this is what we report in as our crime stats that, that occur in this jurisdiction for a particular year. Now, I will tell you that, for example, we can report a criminal homicide that in some year that drops off because of the investigation or otherwise, that number comes down. So you can see, if you looked at a report in, I don't know, 2020 that had a homicide in 2018, it's now zero. That's potentially because it was reclassified for some reason. And that would be the, the situation for each of those numbers. But these are crimes, reports that we've taken, that we've reported.
Okay. Could you clarify for me the exact difference? I mean, I could probably guess at it, but I'd rather you explain to us and the audience, the exact difference between robbery and burglary? Is this just a premise-based crime versus a, like mugging or something? I mean, what's the-
Right. So a burglary is going to be the entry into a commercial building or residence and the taking of, of property. Could be even open garage where nobody's present. A robbery is going to be the traditional robbery you would think of, like a bank robbery or something. But a robbery can also be classified that, you know, you're trying to steal something from Walmart, for example, and you get in a knockdown, drag-out fight with loss prevention. That potentially can become a robbery because of the force of the taking of the said property.
Okay. And I wanted to note, I, I'm very pleased with seeing the total traffic citations basically up almost 50%. I knew you'd be hap, I knew you, I knew you knew I would be happy to see-
Wait, I'm sorry. I was, I was, what would I be happy about?
Uh, I, I'm very happy that the traffic citation number is up almost 50% over last year, which obviously is being proactive. Because traffic, as you know, is a big topic in town. It always is and will be. So I, I like seeing that number. And then the, the moving violations is up, as you stated, 33%. So I appreciate the, the work in that area. And the only last question I had was, just because it was talked about earlier, oh, the graffiti abatement.
Yes.
I, I think it was important to state, 297 versus 151, and you mentioned that we had a rash of graffiti. What's nice to know is even with that huge uptick, that, you know, you really don't see graffiti around. And I think that's a testament to, you know, the great work of our graffiti abatement team and the fact that Measure R covers that. And graffiti is like a huge pet peeve of mine. I'm probably responsible for lots of calls in myself and posts on Galt Connect. But, but to see the fact that we have that much, but you don't see it prevalent, I think is, is very important. And I appreciate the, the quick response on all that. So my last question is going to be on the drug seizure by grams. Obviously, we have all the big players on here. Where would cannabis fall in that? And does it fall in? Is that, would that be in the other category or?
Well, it's not illegal. So unless we had it for, for, by a juvenile perhaps, or something like that. But it's just-
So there's no quantity that's illegal?
Yeah, exactly. Well, there could be, yes, there could be a quantity where you had illegal sales. Well, we did have the case where we had the search warrant. I mean, that's going to be a 2022 case where we took many plants out of a residence. And you could have that. And so that's probably going to be in the other. I can get back to you on how staff quantified that, or where they stuck marijuana. But what we were looking at were the hard drugs.
Yeah. And I hate to say that- It's okay. I don't, I don't need that number. I, I just, I think just because, you know, there's an ongoing conversation about cannabis right now. And I just, and, and, you know, there's obvious the conversation within that conversation of crime, right? So I just was curious of how, I think it's interesting how it's almost like we don't really equate cannabis with the word, with the word crime as much, I think, because it's, I don't know, because it's legal. Now, I don't know. It's just weird how you don't, on things like this, it's not really something you'd see, whereas maybe 10, anyways.
I, I would, you could say, I would say, that you can black market, you know, cannabis sales and crime do go hand in hand. I could say that. So we have many a cases where there's other criminal activity afoot in addition to the sales of illegal marijuana.
Do you have-
So can I clarify on that point? So if you find someone with any illicit drug, heroin, meth, doesn't matter, and you find a joint or a packet of marijuana with that, that's not really addressed because of the existing laws. So that's not recorded in these, these- So that's not recorded in these, these statements.
Correct. In that scenario where you legally possess the marijuana, but maybe illegally possess the methamphetamine. The piece that we would be concerned about is the methamphetamine unless you have some other prohibition for that possession. But it's, it's legal, so.
You find it commonplace.
I find what common, having two drugs like that together?
Yes. Not uncommon would be.
Yeah, I guess it'd be say, I would rather say not uncommon if you found both. But generally, if somebody's using meth, that's going to be their drug of choice.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, just one last question that spawned his question that came off of his. We were just talking about DUIs. I know we have a lot of DUI arrests in our city. Do you guys, obviously driving under the influences, under the influence of any, not just alcohol? We always think of DUIs alcohol, but that's not the case, right? So do you guys, when you make a traffic stop and there's a DUI arrest, is it specifically logged of what that influence is? Whether it's like cannabis, for example, or alcohol? Do you, I know you don't have that stat here, but is that something you could give us at a later date? I would be really interested to see that when the cannabis discussion comes.
Yes.
Because I believe the population needs to, would like to see that data as well.
Right, and it requires special expertise for processing, you know, driving under drugs versus the alcohol, right? You need a DRE, drug recognition expert style approach. But yes, I can provide the DUI breakdown.
I think that's all I have at this moment, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Real, real quick, you said the difference between, and the attorney said, and don't forget burglary is also entering any dwelling with the intent to commit felony. So any felony, so it could be. It's, it could be, now my basic post is going to be revoked for not answering that properly.
I'm just glad I got to remember that from law school because I haven't used it ever since.
Right. It must have been on your law exam. Anyway, so it could be not, what my drive, the point I want to drive on that, it could be not a theft related crime that is occurring with that burglary charge. So that's just a piece. I just want to clarify that and thank you.
Thank you.
The attorney. Yeah, so you can go in, you can get a burglary charge if you went in with the intent to commit rape, for example. Here's one graphic, over the top example.
Councilman Lazzana?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of questions, but I do want to ask for one piece that when you bring that information back, the alcohol under the influence versus the other drugs. Could we also get that from, for like the last five years?
Yeah, with caveat, we did have some corrupted data in there.
Right.
So I'll, I'll build around to the best I can. So yes.
Thank you.
So at least we can, I think we get a good solid three and a half, maybe four.
I just have a couple of comments to make. I appreciate the report, the thoroughness of it. I do like seeing the 8300 officer initiated activity. I think that kind of goes hand in hand with the citations that are up. When my family originally moved down to this area, to the city, one of the reasons was because. We called some people and said, what are the? Give us a CAD summary of what's going, the dispatch, what kinds of calls. And I think at the time, the top type of call was officer initiated, like seeing suspicious people on the roadway and making contact. And then one of the second ones, outside of crime reports, of course, but the second one was probation searches. And that was some time ago, but I think that just really drives home the fact that our officers are out doing, they're not sitting in a parking lot reading newspaper. They're, they're actually out doing. Good stuff in our community and it's greatly appreciated. I would also say that. We may see an uptick in illegal narcotics because of that as well, the officer initiated stuff. So anyhow, thanks for the report. Appreciate everybody in the, in the department and the community outreach that goes on as well and, and, and thank them all for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Chief, for giving us a good report. Thank you for your and your staff for excellent work. The, I'm looking at the report only one, I have a little bit concerned just for your experience. Is injury collision is 85% up. What kind of proactive action that I believe you want, everybody want to be down for 2023? Have any?
So I think first for the police department, I mean, sometimes there's environmental issues that we would work with public works on, you know, like. You know, site corridors and things like that, lighting, other things that we would need improvements on. So we'll always analyze it from that component. But from our side, it's about being out, being visible and, and contacting folks. Sometimes you do get a citation, sometimes you might get a warning depending on the situation. We looked at the areas that had the biggest impact related to accidents by intersection. And the biggest intersection is at East Stockton at Twin Cities, which is going to be that roundabout. That shouldn't be surprising. And that high water mark is 10. And the next high water mark in the city is North Lincoln and Elm, and that's three. So we have sort of what I would call one critical area, which is that roundabout at Twin Cities and East Stockton. That is a concern for us. And we are in or about the area. When we look at, you know, what are the primary collision factors for these accidents? On injury accidents only, not PDOs, property damage only. Speed is 23% and that doesn't mean speed at 70 miles an hour. It could just be too fast for the conditions. Resulting in a, in a collision, but that's going to be basic speed. 17% are unsafe lane changes. 15% are yielding the right of way, which I would tend to believe would go back to what we talked about before. Because alone, that's eight of them. So that's the only place I can think that we would see most of those. And then DUI being 15% of the collisions in the city. So those are your top four reasons. Obviously DUIs are near and dear to us for obvious reasons. Beyond keeping the community safe, but we've been impacted by it personally. So the staff continues to work. We continue to derive home the point for folks to stay active and be engaged with all. Police work and it's not just writing tickets. It's the whole platform of work that we engage in. But it's going to result in more citations and public contacts and, and so on. So we continue to be active. I would just tell you, so I said, hey. Honestly, I thought Councilmember Farmer would hit me up with this if you, if I was being honest about the injury accidents because we had talks about accidents in the past. So I was prepared with what we've done this year, even though you haven't seen it yet. And I want you to know how hard folks are working. So we've had a 59% increase in traffic stops so far this calendar year. We've had 137% increase in moving citations and 158% increase in citations and non moving. So we're up 146 citations in the first less than full three months. And traffic stops are up 216 in less than three months. So I would tell you that in, although we were doing work in 2022 on this, we continue to be aggressive. And the other piece I would say, we're up five collisions during that time, which is 21% up, interestingly enough. And then lastly, I would say that even when we were proactive in the October last year is when we did the traffic safety month. That curiously was the most minor accidents we had in the city at 10. The other high water mark at any particular month was six. And then our non injury accidents were 14. Actually, October, which was oddly, I can't explain it because we burned overtime and we did special operations each and every week. We had 24 accidents in the month. That was our traffic safety month. So I almost, it's head scratching, but it is the reality that we're faced with. But we continue to, you know, be aggressive and be on point. I would add that on traffic safety nationally is in August. So we endeavor to get back on that platform. So we're with the rest of the local agencies on that. So it's a little more than you were probably asking me, but I wanted to get all that out because I was ready for it.
Thanks, Todd. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Papadell?
Thanks once again for the great report. And I know we've talked about retention and the. The, the temperature, the feeling in the department. And. You know, anecdotally, I'm not asking for statistics, but the history that I know of the department right now, our retention is the best. It has been a long time. We're keeping people here and we're not being a training ground and sending them elsewhere. And I think that's reflected in, in what we're seeing here. You know, and we don't have a big internal affairs problem and we don't have a big use of force problem. We have some senior officers that have, demonstrate good judgment. So I think that kind of weighs in overall. And if you turn the news on and look across the state and across the country, cops aren't doing anything anymore because of that one misstep and, you know, you see what happens. However, I see that here we have what 2,000, almost 2,000 more officer initiated activity. So yeah, they're out there doing stuff and it corresponds to felony arrests. And that's getting guns and drugs and bad guys off the street, which is their job. All the other stuff's nice, but that's great. So just an observation and I don't have any questions for you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I would say that, you know, we opened with the report of our appreciation for the community and their support. And I think because the officers feel like they're supported across the board from, from council to the community and in the organization and so on, that, that that creates an environment for them to be appreciated and know that, that we have their back when they do what they're supposed to do for the right reasons. And it wants, you know, people want to work harder and do the right things. And I appreciate, you know, the staff that, that works with us. And we have not since I've been the chief and then before when we were rotating, when Lorenzo first got here since. So since Lorenzo, since Todd retired and Lorenzo came on board, which were simultaneous. Other than some things that happens because those things happen, we haven't had any voluntary separations from the organization going to other, other departments. I'm not so naive to believe that won't last forever, but the fact that we've slowed that down over two hundred, two and a half years has allowed us to get a place where we've added the pop officer, we're adding some more staff. And we get to a place where we're going to have a full time second traffic officer, a second pop officer and allow other folks in the organization to grow and do different assignments. And so I know the management team is committed to it, but it's all the work that the line staff does in this organization that carries the day. So thank you.
Statistics are a funny thing. We would all love to see these be zeros and then everyone would complain you weren't doing your job.
Fair enough.
But thank you for the report. I'm curious of your opinion. What is Galt's maybe top one or two needs that would help improve our city the most?
You know, we really, as a state, so I got to take it outside of Galt, as a state, this homelessness issue has to come full circle and we need to address it in some way. I know the Cal chief's platform for legislation, legislation this next year, they have six items that they're sort of attacking. And they want to attack this Prop 47 to get some of these things under control. The reality is this drug use is tied to other criminal activity, whether it's reported or not. People stealing from family members to support drug habits and different things like that. It's just the cycle that goes on and on. And I think we've had a good first step engaging with the county, with the, the social worker. And I think we need to, I've had some conversations, you know, briefly with the city manager about, you know, what do our next steps look like to, to continue on that work? I think crime is not a big issue. You see some of these numbers, but I think they're generally within line and they, I'd like them to all be zero. But I think that homelessness issue is the biggest quality of life issue that people see and have that negative reaction when they see it. And so we've worked hard, sometimes not as fast as some people want, but we've worked hard to get people moving and displace them. And as I had a conversation with Councilmember Farmer the other day, I mean, then that results them going to the freeway onramps and places like that because they're looking for places that we won't be bothering them. But we can't play whack a mole forever. It doesn't solve anybody's problem and we're maybe not saving, we're saving money on the correction side, but I don't know that we're saving money overall with taxpayer dollars in the way things are being dealt with. And lastly, I would say really the police department should, and criminal stuff, yes, but the police department should not be leading on homelessness issues. And, and so I'd like to get us to a place where we're partnering side by side with whatever that might look like.
Well said. Thank you, sir.
Yes. I wanted one last comment based on what you just said. I think you really hit the nail on the head when you were talking about how crime in a small town is not always like crime as we would look at it in the big picture, like, you know, a, a armed robbery or a rape or a murder or something like that. In a small town. Crime is really tied into those, those smaller like quality of life. And you said it, you said quality of life and you're, you're absolutely right. It's, it's the, it's the, you know, this homeless person is sleeping at the park. I don't feel comfortable with my kid playing on the slide. Or it's, you know, people speeding through my neighborhood. I don't feel safe about my kids playing, you know, ball out front. Or, you know, my kid walking across the crosswalk, I don't feel safe for them transitioning. So it's all these things that are like quality of life, things are not crime in a sense of, of violent crime. They're just other types of things that are, you know, and some of them may not even be considered crime by some. Like people say, well, being homeless isn't a crime. But what I'm getting at is things that the police department, that you guys are dealing with. You guys deal with a lot of things that are not just crime, but they're quality of life. And those, some of those things are the things that are most talked about in this town that I get the most emails about. And the council, all of us get comments about. So just wanted to point that out. So thank you, Chief, again.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Then we move on to. Carillion Boulevard Safety Improvement. By Mr. Sellings.
I used to this desk situation here yet, so I'll just come up here to start. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, Mike Selling, Public Works Director. Yeah, tonight, this item is basically an update for you all. You may recall in late 2021, there were multiple items before the council at that time regarding the Carillion Boulevard and just traffic safety, kind of a traffic 101. We even did, I think, in October of that year before that. And I think it kind of culminated around the November, second meeting in November of 21 anyway. Staff brought some recommendations which the council approved and those were really three things. There was purchase of a couple of speed trailers for the PD to use to deploy around the city to help, you know, remind folks of what the speed limits are, not just on Carillion, but, but throughout the city. And then the second one was to, to enter a contract with a consultant to do some additional analysis at both the Vauxhall and Lake Canyon intersections. And, and then also to move forward with a project to, at that time, we called it a restriping project. Now we're, we're calling it essentially the, the near term safety improvements project. And largely what that would do would be to reduce the lane widths for traffic. And there's a, a pretty well documented correlation of reduced speeds with narrower lanes. And that would also provide some additional room for bicyclists too. So to kind of improve safety for multi modes of travel. So we've been working on this. We did some additional analysis. And with me tonight is Mr. David Sabers and Mr. Todd Tregenza of GHD, our consultant. Mr. Sabers will make the presentation and then city staff and, and the consultants will be available for any questions after that. But I also want to take a moment to recognize our city engineer, John Griffin. And then our newest engineer with city staff is Brandon Woods. And they're the ones who have largely been working on this with the consultants. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sabers and we'll get going.
Thanks, Mike. With that comprehensive introduction, I'm not sure that I, I need to say anything. I was told that I would have a remote if somebody could advance my slides. Oh. Thank you. So again, Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening. So as Mike mentioned, the purpose of our project is to develop a near term improvement plan, something that can be initiated rather quickly, potentially in the next two to three years of timeframe. And something that's going to build on. And something that's going to build on the previous planning efforts that were done on Carillion previously and not limit opportunities for, you know, future enhancements. Mike acknowledged the project team. The draft of this was also distributed to the police and fire departments for their review and so acknowledged those reviewers that participated. We have a comprehensive agenda to get through. This can look intimidating, but the point that I really want to get through on this is the comprehensive, that we looked at this corridor from a variety of viewpoints and present those recommendations and findings to you this evening. The study area that we looked at was Carillion Boulevard from Twin Cities Road down to Simmerhorn Road. But in reality, most of the corridor recommendations ended just south of Vauxhall where the divided roadway ends. From there, we transitioned to the Simmerhorn Road, which has not really been developed or improved upon. So the existing corridor, and I'd commend you on it, it's a very nice-looking functioning roadway, provides two travel lanes in each direction, a 12-foot lane next to the median and an 11-foot lane. And it has what technically meets the criteria of a five-foot bike lane, but what that really is, is three feet of asphalt and two feet of, you know, the concrete curb. And the challenge with this is that we do get that joint between the asphalt and the concrete gutter that can be at times a concern or a challenge to a bicycle in the bike lane if that's not smooth. So in our initial screening, we've listed our project goals. Provide two travel lanes in each direction. Maintain at least 10 and a half foot travel lanes. Trying to achieve four feet of asphalt for the bike lane. If we can, to add a buffer between the bike lane and the adjacent travel lane. Minimal impact to existing curb and gutter. And then again, look at the pavement maintenance, the quality of the pavement that's out there and how we expect that to deteriorate over the next few years. We evaluated narrowing of lanes. We looked at the crosswalks where they are and how they're marked. Adding rapid rectangular flashing beacons, speed feedback display signs, and then additional pavement markings or the green bike lanes, which you've used on other facilities within your community. We eliminated many different traffic calming concepts. Curb bulbouts, which tend to deflect the curb out into the roadway, just because that's challenging with the bike lane. And also doesn't maintain the 10 and a half foot travel lanes that we're looking at. Speed tables and raised crosswalks were also eliminated, primarily because those are intended for use on roadways with speeds that are lower than what we're seeing on Carillion today. So as Mike mentioned, this is a graphic that's prepared by NACTO, and which is an association of governments that's been formed to look at complete streets and traffic calming ideas. And this can be a scattering of dots. Well, it is a scattering of dots. But the important part to get out of this is that there is this relationship between lane width and vehicle speeds. And as lane widths are reduced, so are vehicle speeds. So we looked at different alternatives and how we can use the existing asphalt to achieve our goals of, again, improving the width of the bike lane and narrowing of the lanes. An alternative one is a simple restriping of the roadway, changing to 11-foot through lanes and using four feet of asphalt for the bike lane. The bike lane width would be bigger than that because it would also include the 28 inches that we have out there for gutter. But this meets our minimum project goals, with the exception of it doesn't add a bike lane. All of our alternatives then build on each other. So this is again, alternative one with the 11-foot lanes, the four-foot asphalt bike lane. Our next option reduces the travel lanes to 10 and a half feet. And then that additional lane would then increase the asphalt bike lane to five feet. Furthering that, alternative three is again, using the 10 and a half foot travel lanes, but adding a one and a half foot bike lane buffer, which is the minimum width of bike lane that's, or buffer that's allowed, and then the three and a half feet of asphalt. And then our last alternative, to achieve a two-foot buffer and the four-foot of asphalt for the bike lane, we would need to reconstruct the curb and gutter for the entire length. This alternative was discarded as just being cost prohibitive. But again, what this does is it gets us to a preferred bike lane of four foot of asphalt and the two foot of buffer. A summary of the different alternatives. This looks really good in the report and it looks really good in my mind. Not sure that it's very readable as a slide, so I apologize for that. But it's just a summary of what I ran through. One of our key recommendations is the use of green bike lanes on Carillion. The green bike lanes can do a great job of identifying the conflict zones between pedestrians, or excuse me, bicycles and vehicles. And also does a lot to just enhance the appearance of the roadway and help identify bicyclists where they should be within the roadway. Narrowing of the travel lanes from the existing lane widths creates an opportunity to add a bike lane on southbound Carillion between Twin Cities down to Lake Park. This is the only segment of Carillion that does not have a bike lane. And this adds, would allow us the opportunity to complete that and connect then the Carillion to Twin Cities. It's also, adding bike lanes is a great mechanism to have in grant applications. We looked at all the different crosswalks across Carillion and the vast majority of them appear to be located correctly. We do have one recommendation to remove a crosswalk. And this would be at the North Trail Crossing, which is south of Walnut. We have two trail crossings that are within 140 feet of each other, which does not meet driver expectations. And you can see in the picture to the left how closely spaced these are. So we feel that the removal of the North Trail Crossing will help us consolidate the crossing activity to one location. When drivers drive crosswalks and they don't experience pedestrians in those crosswalks, they tend to lose regard and respect for the crosswalk. And so by consolidating the two crosswalks into one crossing location, we can improve the number of pedestrians there and then promote safety because drivers become accustomed to pedestrians being there and not driving through an unoccupied crosswalk. So crosswalk markings, the crosswalk markings that are out there today meet requirements established by the state and by the federal government. But they can always be enhanced. And so what our recommendation here is to go to a ladder-style crosswalk, which is the crosswalk on the right. It's more paint. It's much more visible to oncoming motorists. But it also helps just to reinforce to the pedestrian of where they should be crossing so that we can again, get them crossing in the crosswalk instead of crossing in the proximity of a crosswalk. One of our key recommendations is the use of an additional rapid rectangular flashing beacon. We have these in a couple of locations currently on Carillion. These are activated by a pedestrian. So when they push the button, the motorists would see flashing lights, letting them know that there's pedestrian activity taking place. This location at Vauxhall has been requested by council for enhancements. But it's also at the southern end of the community where traffic is coming from off of Simmerhorn and they're driving through basically an unimproved, undeveloped area. And so we want to reinforce to them that now they're entering into a residential community. Speed feedback display signs are also used at a couple of locations on Carillion. And these are radar detected. They inform the motorists of how fast they are driving. So we initially looked at adding some of these, but one of the things we need to be cautious is the overuse of these devices. That if drivers just drive up and down the road and they see them over and over and over again, they tend to start to disregard it. But also in relation to other devices that are in the roadway, we want to just make sure that we're not overloading the driver. So we came to the recommendation of no additional speed feedback display signs. But we do feel that the RRFB at Vauxhall is a better device than the speed feedback display signs for that location. So pedestrian curb ramps. There are approximately 44 ramps that are out there in the corridor now. Most of the ramps meet the current ProWAG guidelines. When Carillion was first constructed, the ADA guidelines that we have today were not in place. They have been developing over the years. But recent ramps that have been installed do meet the current requirements. However, there are 18 locations where the ramp does not meet those and they would need to be removed and reconstructed. You can see in the picture that what the typical new ramps look like. And the main features are the detectable warning surfaces that help guide somebody into the use of the crosswalk. And also there's a flat landing or turning area in the ramp itself so that a pedestrian can orient themselves to the crossing of the roadway, but they can do it in the ramp and they don't have to get out into the roadway before they turn and get oriented correctly. We took a look at the existing speed limit signs along Carillion. It is signed at 45 miles an hour. There are, excuse me, four signs in each direction. And they are located at key entry points or after key entry points into the community, such as north of and south of, you know, Walnut. So we felt that that's acceptable. We did not make any recommendations for new speed limit signs. We get to stop signs, and this is everybody's favorite topic, right, is stop signs. There are stop signs on all of the side streets at Carillion. We didn't have any recommendations there. Multway stop control is guided by the manual and uniform traffic control devices, which is prepared by the FHWA. And that establishes warrants or conditions that if satisfied, would tend to improve traffic operations and safety. And these warrants are a combination of traffic volumes that would be on the main street, Carillion, and on the side street approaches such as Vauxhall or Vintage Oak or one of the other streets. So while we didn't have any recommendations for changing stop signs, staff did ask us to look at two specific locations for four-way stops. The first on was Carillion and Lake Canyon Avenue. And again, I mentioned that there are warrants or the criteria that we're comparing the traffic counts against. On Lake Canyon, the traffic averaged 104 vehicles per hour over the key eight hours that we're looking at. But unfortunately, it needs to be 140 for, to meet the criteria. So while the average didn't meet the volume criteria, the volumes itself did meet the 140 for two hours out of the required eight hours. Traffic on Carillion was sufficient to satisfy the warrants. It did meet the average. And it did have enough volume for eight hours of the required eight hours to meet the warrants. But it's a combination of the two. A third item that is looked at is the ratio of traffic on the main street versus the minor street. And you want these to be somewhat equal or a two-to-one ratio. And the ratio out there at Lake Canyon is a three-to-one ratio, which is higher than what we would like. And you don't want to be stopping a lot of cars on Carillion to benefit very few cars on a side street. That's pretty much that criteria. The second location we looked at was at Vauxhall. And Vauxhall traffic volumes are much lower than they are on Lake Canyon. None of the, no hour of the day met the warrants for Vauxhall. Traffic patterns are a little different down here on Carillion. And the volumes on Carillion actually satisfied the volumes for 10 hours out of the required eight. But again, it's the combination of the two and we're not getting the volume on the side street that we would need. And the ratio here is 6.2 to 1, which is much higher than the two-to-one ratio that we would look for.
May I ask you a question while we're here?
Sure, yep.
Why, both main streets are obviously Carillion. Why are the different numbers for ratios required in the different intersections?
So the ratio's not required. It's the results are. The Carillion volumes are relatively the same, but because there's less traffic at Vauxhall, the main street to minor street ratio becomes a lot higher. Mayor, did I answer the question?
Yes, yes you did.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Sure.
Questions? So go, explain again what you said about the traffic volumes on Carillion at Lake Canyon. And I've seen these numbers earlier today. You have numbers of vehicles for Carillion at that intersection and then you have them for Lake Canyon at that intersection, right? And you're stating, if I'm reading this correctly, that the traffic volume for the Carillion doesn't really meet the criteria, but the one for the Carillion north to south does. But you again stated that the combination of the two. Can you just touch on what you said again about that?
Sure. If I butchered that delivery, I apologize and I'll try again. So again, it's, the warrant is a combination of we need so much traffic on the minor street and so much traffic on a major street for the same eight hours of the day for a warrant to be satisfied and a four-way stop to be justified. So it's a combination of the two. And on Lake Canyon, we only have enough traffic to meet the warrants for two hours out of the required eight. But the traffic volumes on Carillion are sufficient to meet the Carillion criteria for eight hours.
Okay, so.
We're only meeting it in total for two.
What hour, what the eight hours you mentioned, what hours are you using, by the way?
So we are using the eight highest hours, which are generally like one hour in the seven to eight. And then most of them, the other ones are like from 11 to 6, those hours. But there are the highest hours based on the traffic count data at that intersection.
Seven to eight AM?
Yes.
And then 11 to?
Like five or six.
11 AM to 5 PM?
Yep.
So seven to eight. So you said something a minute ago that kind of caught me. You said, "We don't want to stop cars on Carillion to benefit cars on side streets." Isn't that what you just said?
So I think we need to have the right balance, right? Because we can't, we can't install a four-way stop at every location. So we have to have this criteria. And so part of the criteria is that we're looking for certain traffic levels, but we're also, we want them to be fairly well-balanced between the two streets. As we get more and more traffic on Carillion, then we're not getting... Let me circle back to what I said.
You said a minute ago, I wrote it down, "We don't want to stop cars on Carillion to benefit cars on the side streets." So I, so, but what was missing from that statement is that, and maybe I was just speaking for myself, but...
No, I think he said it a little different. He's actually, you don't want to stop a lot of cars on a main thoroughfare for very few on side streets. of cars on a main thoroughfare for very few on side streets. If there's a lot on the side streets.
But what was missing was the pedestrian. I could care less about the cars on the side street. My concern with that intersection is that crosswalk right there. You have a park on the corner. You have a main school. And I know, and don't think it's the wrong way, but I'm pretty certain that none of you guys that did this, or anybody involved in this project, probably lives in that neighborhood. Am I wrong? You live in that neighborhood? Do you have kids across that crosswalk to go to school? All right. Well, what I hear a lot of is complaints about that crosswalk and that they don't feel safe. So what I see here is, I see stop signs on Lake Canyon that really don't meet a warrant. But the traffic north, north to south does meet the warrant, but then in conjunction with the other, they won't. So it's almost funny because it's like, it's almost like maybe we should have the stop sign at Corillian and not the other way. And again, I, I, I understand you can't just put stop signs everywhere. But circling back to the beginning of your presentation, you you outlined your goals, right? Nowhere on that goal, and correct me if I'm wrong, but nowhere on that presentation, like goals, did it say to look for enhancing pedestrian. The word pedestrian wasn't even mentioned in the in the in the goals. And and for and for someone, let me give you a little background. The vice mayor and I have been working crusading for safety on this corridor for probably seven years or better since I was on the safety committee. And it's been since 2018, we've been having these discussions. And it was always the discussion of pedestrian safety. That was always that whether it was speeding or stop signs or whatever, it was all entailed about pedestrian safety. That's always what it was about. And so it behooves me a little bit to see that we're here now where I feel like the focus might have been a little misdirected with the study. And again, I know you guys were given criteria, and I apologize if you feel like getting picked on, but.
No, it's fine.
You know, it's just this is, I'm very passionate about this. And I, and I think that, you know, safety for for our community is is number one. And this particular intersection, above all else, is a high concern. And I just, it baffles me that we are sitting here now tonight with the amount of money we've spent for your services to basically tell the taxpayers, using their own taxpayer money, what we can't do or what we shouldn't do. So.
And I, first of all, I want to address the comment on on safety. It was a concern, and that was probably an error in my part on establishing the slides and trying to keep them brief. But the focus on reducing vehicle speeds is driven towards safety. The speeds on the lower speeds on the roadway will improve safety. We have the stop signs on on Lake Canyon, because traffic on Lake Canyon does need to come to a complete stop before they can find a gap in traffic and proceed safely out onto Corillian. So that that's why those are there today. And that is common practice to have stop signs on the lower volume street.
My concern is that we have, there's no traffic stops between Twin Cities and Walnut in that section. There is going southbound at Vintage Oak. Okay. But but when you leave Walnut Avenue proceeding north, or when you leave Twin Cities heading south, and I mean, you haven't got to it in your slide, so I'm jumping ahead, but you'll show the eighty-fifth percentile of the speed and stuff. And so you know, the averages, people are tending to go a little bit over the speed limit. That's commonplace nowadays, I think. But they tend to, you know, you this this Lake Canyon is kind of like a halfway point between that and that. And so it's without that breakup or anything to slow people down at this particular intersection, which again, we have a park, we have people needing to traverse this intersection to to go to school, you know, juveniles. That is our main concern. You know, we had a crosswalk there, and I know you may not know this, but when Mr. Hines came to work for our city, one of the first things that the mayor did was take him out in a car and show him that crosswalk. And the fact that the lights didn't work for like, I don't know, two years or something, that hadn't worked. And so we remedied that, I think, with some other things. But again, this intersection really is about safety for the children and the people crossing that street. I just want to stress that. So please continue. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. So I'm in a backtrack here.
Yes. Sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a piggyback comment on what he's asking.
Okay.
Just for the clarification, this study, especially they done with the traffic, right? And all the stop signs in this city or another city, they're doing just on the on the amount of the car passing through, or there's some other criteria? Or some roads, they depend on their structure. Some road, they have a slope. Some of they have a curve. So in your opinion, it is this report, the stop, stop sign only warrant if they're yet meet the criteria for the traffic, or there's some other requirement can fulfill that stop.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for that question. So there are other criterias that can be met. And we did look at the pedestrian counts that were provided by the city, and they were not sufficient to also meet warrant criteria. But we did look at that and evaluate that. Vision obstructions is is another criteria that could be used. That if if there was limited view for traffic on the side street to access out onto the main street, then a four-way stop would be a remedy for that, to stop that traffic, to improve the gap so that the side street traffic could come out onto the roadway.
So there is any study they done on the Vauxhall or Corillian, when these people entering from the side, like in side vision, you say?
So in in doing the field review, which I did, yeah, I did not see vision obstructions where I that I felt limited the visibility for traffic to enter Corillian.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I was, sorry.
Go ahead.
So I know that his question was specifically about visual obstructions entering the roadway for cars. But I would like to note that I'm sure you guys will, I hope that you're aware of it. But on Vauxhall, when you're heading southbound on Vauxhall, and Mr. The vice mayor actually lives in that exact neighborhood, when you're coming over, there's a rise of the road. When you come over going southbound on Vauxhall, when you come over that rise, the intersection of the, I'm sorry, the crosswalk, again, I'm talking about crosswalks, not not in cars entering the roadway, that crosswalk is on the north side of the intersection, and it is very poorly visible. Because when you're coming over the rise, you can't see it compared to if that crosswalk was on the other southbound side of the intersection, you would have a more visual thing. But that that intersection, and again, I know your data, and correct me if I'm wrong, but your data doesn't reflect any close calls because we don't know, right? Close call, like, oh, my gosh, I almost got hit. I mean, nobody's going to report that, so we don't have any data. But I know I get a lot of people talking about close calls. So luckily, they're close calls. But I have, you know, I also, one of our public safety appointees, Ms. McCord, her husband was in a severe accident at that intersection, trying to pull out from from a from one of the side streets, and somebody came over that rise. So I'm saying, so with visual obstructions, I would like to reverse that it's not just an obstruction, but poor visibility for things like the crosswalk. And again, me focusing on the crosswalks and not really the side street stuff. So I just wanted to point that out to you.
Yep. And and thank you for that. So not in my comments or in the report, but we have discussed that the Vauxhall and that crosswalk. And we have deferred that to final design to the next stage where they to have a more formal review of that location with the potential of moving it to the south side. So your your point has been heard by by staff.
Okay. Thank you. Please continue.
Yes. So I backtrack all the way back, Slide seven, I apologize for that. I don't know how I skipped over this slide, but this is the traffic counts that was provided by the city. And we see that that Corillian is carrying roughly four thousand vehicles per day, a little bit more in the southbound than direction than the northbound. And that's because the the frontage road along ninety-nine can carry some of the northbound traffic. But a typical minor arterial like Corillian would carry somewhere between three thousand to fourteen thousand vehicles per day. And we're at the extreme low end of that. And the overall capacity of the roadway, if this was, you know, in a fully built out dense environment, would be somewhere around twenty-four thousand vehicles per day. So the point I want to make here, and I should have made earlier, and I apologize that I skipped this slide, was that we are at the low end of what the design of that would be. Drivers feel very confident in the roadway. We don't have a lot of driveways. We do have intersections with nice spacing. And so drivers are very comfortable in driving the roadway and can drive it at higher speeds than than maybe we would like. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is used to set the the speed limit, and you want or required to have the speed limit close to the eighty-fifth percentile. But the eighty-fifth percentile speed is the speed at which eighty-five percent of the drivers are driving at or slower. And as you can see on on Corillian, they're closer to fifty than than forty-five. It is forty-five on the along the corridor. Let me get back to.
Mister, and I, and I totally apologize. I, your, I forgot your name. I apologize.
You can call me Dave, or you can.
Dave. Dave is good. Sorry, Dave.
That's fine.
I didn't, I just wanted to be able to address it by your name, just to be respectful. So, Dave, so these traffic count numbers obviously are very important to your data. Was there any consideration of things that might affect that increase in the near future?
No. Part of the the criteria is that you base it on existing counts that are out there and not a guess on what they would be in the future. While counts may increase on on Corillian as we emerge fully from COVID and more development takes place, typically down around Simmerhorn Road, those volumes might increase. But those volumes are already sufficient for the four-way stop warrants. Doesn't appear that there would be much more development at Lake Canyon or Vauxhall that would increase those traffic related volumes up to the warrant levels.
So the fact that there's a subdivision Greenwood Cottages, which is just up the road and to the left of this very intersection, that is going to be two hundred and twenty homes that is currently under construction, you don't think that would impact these numbers?
So I don't know that that has a direct, it has its own access out onto Corillian.
Right.
And I think so that would increase Corillian, not necessarily increase the Lake Canyon.
Well, I'm talking about Corillian. I'm just talking about.
Yes. But the Corillian volumes are already sufficient to meet the warrants. It's the side street numbers.
Right.
If we're going to hang our hat on the warrants.
Right. Right. Okay. Go ahead. Continue. Sorry.
I'm way over my twenty minutes that Mike had told me to be, but hopefully, the discussion is worth it.
We've been waiting four years for this discussion.
Okay. All right. So pavement maintenance. Staff had us, staff provided pavement condition index reports, which is a grade of zero to a hundred on the condition with closer to one hundred being great. You get down into the seventy, sixty, you start falling into the fair and poor grades. When you get to about seventy-five, you want to take proactive action to restore it back to optimal condition. Pavement deterioration is not linear, it's parabolic. So once the pavement starts deteriorating, you get more water down into the the subsurface, the subgrade, and it just it exasperates it. So you really want to get to it at at PCI values of seventy-five, maybe a little bit higher. In the data that was provided by staff, the first couple of columns are the two thousand eighteen, which is the last time the PCI value was calculated for Corillian. And we see only a couple of segments that are following at seventy-five or lower. Staff does maintain pavement index deterioration curves, which forecast out PCI values of future years. And you'll see the twenty twenty-three numbers, that we have many more segments that are now following, falling into the fair and good range. So we really need to do something with with the pavement. So staff's recommendation is a two-inch mill and overlay for the entire segment of Corillian from Twin Cities down to just south of Vauxhall. And if we do that, it would restore the the roadway to near perfect condition. As I mentioned earlier, the draft version of this report was submitted to police and fire for their review. We got very good comments from both agencies. The police department comments were generally supportive of all of the alternatives that that we had put together, very supportive of narrowing lanes and reducing vehicle speeds. Fire department did express some concerns over narrowing lanes would increase their response times. However, they were supportive of reductions to eleven-foot travel lanes, but did not support reductions in lane widths less than eleven feet. So our near term plan, after evaluating the different alternatives, we have recommended that would be alternative one, which is the use of eleven-foot travel lanes and a four-foot asphalt bike lane. It also includes the recommendations to do the green bike lanes on Corillian, to add the bike lane on southbound Corillian between Twin Cities and Lake Park, the ladder style crosswalks that I showed you, the removal of the North Trail Crossing and the RRFB that's at that location, a new rapid rectangular flashing beacon at Vauxhall, the reconstruction of the curb ramps, and then the two-inch mill and overlay for Corillian. Can't leave you without cost. Wrapping all this up, the cost is in the neighborhood of three point six million. The majority of that cost is in the mill and overlay. And this is a high level planning estimate. The next steps, staff has submitted two grant applications to fund this project. We hope to advertise it for final design in spring, summer of this year, advertise for construction late this year, early next year, and then begin construction in summer, fall of twenty twenty-four. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be before you and open up for any additional questions.
Have a question. I was racking my brain, thinking maybe I dreamed it, but I finally found it in, not in this tonight's item, but we did receive a memo. And if I'm reading it right, we did a pedestrian count at Vauxhall and Lake Canyon. And it says the warrant requirement, or the threshold for pedestrian crossings at Vauxhall would be four hundred and fifty. I don't know if you remember that, Mike?
Yeah, I can speak to that, council member. So as part of the effort from the direction we received back in in late twenty-one, was to do that additional kind of deeper dive, if you will, on the pedestrians at those two intersections. And so we set up a video camera out there over a two-week span at each intersection when school is in session to get twenty-four hour around the clock for, like I say, two weeks. And what we saw, and basically what the camera does is it's every time, you know, that there's a motion in front of the camera, it takes a clip, video clip. And so we had staff review those video clips. And what we were seeing, I think, on the Lake Canyon was an average of twenty to thirty or so pedestrians or bicyclists crossing, crossing the roadway per day. And I think down at Vauxhall, it was it was lower, about eight to ten or so is what what we reported. So there were a couple of peaks, you know, where they were higher, but that was the, those were the averages.
Okay. Thank you.
And at four fifty, sorry, just to clarify that, there's a table, and and Dave may know it better than me, but I think it's in the MUTCD, where it looks at the number of lanes and and I think the traffic volumes and and recommends what and I think the traffic volumes and and recommends what the, uh, pedestrian count would need to be in order to meet the warrant. So it's similar to what he was saying, as far as if you've got a high volume on the major road, you've got to have, you know, something relatively close, or you've got to have a a lack of gaps for the the side street traffic or pedestrians to get out. And if you don't, uh, have that, then you put in the four-way stop, you meet the warrants. And that's kind of what those numbers will essentially, you know, uh, determine, so.
All right. And then, real quick while I'm talking, if you could click back to you, you recommended, uh, the flashing beacons at both of those crosswalks? What was that?
So there is one existing today at Lake Canyon. We're recommending one at Vauxhall as a new installation.
Okay, I thought I remembered that. Thank you.
Dave, does the flashing beacon at Vau- does the flashing beacon at Lake Canyon, and I and I was gonna go over there today, but I got sidetracked. I didn't have time before this before this meeting. It is, is it just the flashing and and Mikey, you can answer this. Is it the flashing on the sides or is there one in the middle island as well?
No, there is nothing in the middle island. It's only at the sides.
So it's not like the new one we put in at F Street, where you have the middle, you have the middle, um, what do we call it? The, um, it's like a, there's a term for where you can stop halfway if you need to.
Oh, the pedestrian refuge island.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not like that.
There's no refuge island, no, correct.
Dave, um, I feel weird calling you David. I'd rather call you Mister something, but.
You you can call me Mister Sabers, but that's usually reserved for my dad.
Okay, all right. So Dave, um, you know, I I know you're not familiar with this, but there was an original Corillian master plan, which included several options presented to us when I first came on council. And, uh, that presentation was showing us very options. One of them was a a great number of roundabouts at all the intersections. And then there was another one that talked about maybe doing stoplights. And it kind of puzzles me that we would have been presented something back then to talk about doing stoplights at some of these intersections when we're having a conversation right now, which you're saying data doesn't even support doing one single stop sign, much less a stop light. Um, I mean, we could have probably approved that back then, and we probably be would be doing stoplights, I don't know. But, um, I I I would have to ask staff, you know, we have a stop sign at Vintage Oak, and I'm pretty certain that that stop sign got put in at Vintage Oak with no data criteria to support it. Do you have any background on that intersection, Mike? I know that was before you were here.
Yeah, uh, well, I'm I'm gonna try to recall, because I remember, you know, Bill Forrest, who passed away, he had explained it to me once upon a time. Um, he's, he basically indicated that the original plan for that, uh, residential area had, um, well, I think there was actually, and Todd's here, so he may remember too. But, um, I think there was, I meant Ambrosio or Vintage Oak was, uh, originally intended to extend, uh, further east to Marengo. So there was supposed to be a second outlet there, and I believe there was supposed to be even a third outlet. There's a stub street to the north, and I can't remember the name of it, I'd have to look on a map. But that was supposed to be another exit. Neither of those happened. So the only way out was Ambrosio Vintage Oak. And I believe that that was the justification, if you will, for, uh, putting in that always stop there. Because there were a, you know, significant number of homes, I don't know what the what the count is, but that was the justification, I believe, they, uh, whatever traffic engineer or whatever, uh, essentially recommended that, so.
But you don't have any knowledge that that was supported by traffics, like traffic counts? It was more that it was the only exit point, and we felt they felt it was needed or something?
I think it was a combination. So and maybe kind of just to circle back to what you were referencing before, there was a planning study that the community development department got a grant for, I think is what you were referencing when you first came on council. That was a long-range plan, those two alternatives, one being mostly signals, keeping at the four lanes that it is, and the other was the roundabouts, like you said, at most intersections and and doing what we call road diet and shrinking it down to two travel lanes instead of the four that are currently out there. And so those were the two long-term, and I think that was a twenty-forty, if I remember right. I'd have to go back and check. But that was kind of long-range. And so this is really, like we said, near-term. So I just want to make sure that we make that distinction, that, you know, one is is, you know, fifteen, twenty years out, and the other is, you know, here here in the next few years. But getting back to as far as Ambrosio, I don't know what the traffic projections were on Corillian back then, what was looked at as far as Eastview coming and whatnot. Um, it it could well have been, you know, utilizing some, uh, traffic projections that they did back then, too. Looking at how busy is Corillian gonna be, as Dave mentioned earlier, is there gonna be enough, uh, you know, gaps for those folks on Vintage Oak or or Ambrosio to get out? And if they looked at that and said, well, we it's it's, you know, it's gonna be sufficient enough to justify that stop sign. I don't know, that's speculation on my part, but I I think that there was probably some data. It wasn't just a, yeah, sounds good kind of thing by any stretch.
Well, one thing that's interesting is I always find that, and I've learned this kind of over the last four years, is that the city tends to be very reactive instead of proactive. And I think that's very much the case, um, uh, in, um, when it comes to this type of discussions with, uh, you know, traffic, you know, it's basically like we say, well, we don't we don't have certain criteria that triggers whatever. But if we were to say, well, we had two fatalities, then all of a sudden they'd be like, oh, well, now we have the trigger point. So well, basically, in some cases, we have to see a need in order to provide something instead of thinking ahead and thinking, well, we have, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty homes coming in at Cottagewood, Eastview is now under under, you know, progress now, so how's that gonna impact? Are people gonna go down Marengo to get over to Rayleigh's to shop for groceries? Or are they gonna cut down Walnut? I mean, what what are the habits gonna be? We don't know. But again, thinking, trying to think proactively instead of just reactively, we're getting ready to, you know, we're taking suggestions on spending money to do things. What we don't want to do is come back in two or three years and go, you know what, we need to re redo what we just did two years ago. I think there's nothing wrong with being more proactive and thinking ahead on some things. Chief, I have a question for you. The graph that you showed us with the traffic accidents, you said the green represents usually one accident, but the yellow or the red would represent what? Three. So I'll notice on the diagram that the chief gave us here, there's a yellow with the red spot in the middle of it at this intersection. I was able to zoom in on my phone and look and see what that is, and that's the Lake Canyon intersection.
So you have, um, where you had multiple accidents were three at Walnut and Corillian. There were three. Everything else was a single accident on that corridor. So there was one uh, accident that occurred at, um, Corillian at Twin Cities. And then I think I'm going up right off memory, then one further down. And then we had the three at, um, Walnut?
If you give me a second. This this diagram right here shows Lake Canyon intersection. It's it's clear as day, red marked, red, yellow.
I have, I have something here. Hold on. I just need a second.
But while you're looking that up, um, you know, interesting, some interesting data that the the chief presented a minute ago was that we have a hundred and thirty-six percent increase in moving violations. You know, I I think it's just, in my opinion, people just are driving worse nowadays. They just call it lack of, you know, maybe they're just not, you know, we're clearly doing more enforcement, but maybe they just don't have any regard for traffic laws. I mean, I have an intersection that's a very high-travel intersection. I think that at C and Fourth, uh, that we did a traffic study a few years ago that showed something like, you know, four thousand cars a day going down just that one section. And I could sit out there and see probably a hundred people a day conservatively just run the stop sign. People just don't have regard for traffic laws. And so, again, all this data to me is just pointing that we're gonna see people tend to drive a little faster. Um, you know, you're gonna see, you know, more people try driving on that road when Cottagewood gets finished and possibly with Eastview. Um, we have another, we have an empty lot that's over on the other corner across from Cottagewood. We don't know what that's gonna be. But I, we're definitely not gonna see a decrease in traffic. We're gonna see an uptick. We're also gonna see more kids, you know, you said thirty people, thirty kids or thirty, uh, people crossing that intersection. You're, I agree, compared to four hundred, that's nothing. But it's still.
Mister Farmer, to be quite honest, I think you've honestly made your point repeatedly on this topic. I I understand your passion. I really do. And I'm not trying to be offensive.
Well, I I take offense to you interrupting me, Mister Mayor, because I am speaking and I have a right to do so.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep the the meeting moving forward.
Well.
Well, I have one question. I appreciate your points and your concern for safety. I do. But do you have a suggestion for this item on, you know, that we're discussing? A a plan of action?
Well, I want to remind you, Mister Mayor, that we've had four meetings since the last five years on this very topic that have culminated in this moment. So I think, you know, we've been patiently waiting to discuss this item. Yes, I do have suggestions. And and and, uh...
I can, I can, if you want, provide the locations you asked for.
It's all right. I don't I don't need them. I don't need them. I I think as an equal member of this this board, I I I'm I'm a little upset that I keep getting continually more than one occasion being cut off by by constituents. Uh, when I was the mayor, sir, I never did that.
I was I wasn't suggesting you should stop. I was asking if you had a a plan.
Well, my suggestion would be this. This would be my input. First of all, I won't support this tonight. I know we're not voting on it, but I wouldn't support it because I don't think it goes far enough. I would like to see it made more proactive. I do agree with you on the Vauxhall flashing beacon. I I don't think that Vauxhall warrants, although people have been asking for it, I don't think that we probably warrant a stop sign. Well, clearly, your data doesn't warrant anything, but in my opinion, I don't think it's needed. I I res- I do appreciate the recommendation of the flashing beacon. I also would like to see the crosswalk moved to the other side, which you mentioned was was a possibility. That would be great. But I would like to see more things done at at at, uh, at Lake Canyon. I I really would like to see a a a four-way stop sign at that intersection, because I I think we need to do more to protect people crossing that. And at the very minimum, although I prefer the stop sign, I believe we need a third flashing beacon in the middle of the street to make that crosswalk the most robust that it could possibly be. Um, that would be, that would be everything else, the bike lanes, you know, all that stuff, again, is just trivial to me. But those are the things that I would like to see to 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 make me feel comfortable that I'm doing the most for my taxpayers that have been bugging me for this for five years. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mister Lozano, you have something to say?
I just have a a quick question for the chief. Could you point out those, um, those intersections and how many were at each? And and here's why I ask. We received an email today for the calendar year of twenty-twenty-two, that there were eight on that roadway. And, um, one of them was yield to pedestrian. Do you happen to know, not only the intersections and how many were at each, but where that one in particular was?
Okay, let me give you the, um, it's on a different screen. I have to pull up. So let me give you the intersections that the accidents occurred.
Okay.
And then I can go back and tell you where the pedestrian was. Of the eight accidents, I will tell you that one was a, um, hit-and-run property damage-only accident. So, and that was at Vintage Oak and, uh, Corillian. Um, we had, uh, Corillian in Lake Park twice. No, I'm sorry. Corillian in Lake Park, the Vintage Oak at Corillian, like I just told you. We had Corillian at Elk Hills, Corillian at Lake Canyon, and then we had three, Corillian at Walnut. And then we had one all the way down at Corillian and Simmerhorn. Somewhere during the year, we incorporated that. So there could have been something in the county area before that incorporation. I don't remember when that time was. But since, because that was November twenty-second, or twenty-ninth of this year, that was registered in the city limits. And then,
I can jump in. Chief, was it Elk Hills where the failure to yield to pedestrian was at?
Thank you. I sent it to Mike, and he backed me up by me sending it early. So fortunately, I did that right. Thank you. So that's where that, those were the twenty-two. We've had one, um, uh, this year. And it was, um, I drove my staff crazy today.
Was it Lake Canyon?
Was it Lake Canyon?
That was Lake Canyon.
And, uh, Corillian was the singular in this calendar year that's occurred.
I I just want to make a comment on that, and then I'll I'll wait for public comment to make my my, uh, ask my questions. But, um, I, it's amazing that there has only been eight at last calendar year. I walk Corillian pretty regularly and cross at many of these intersections. Um, I would have to agree that there probably been several near misses, but we can't always go off of stuff we don't know. But to only think there were eight.
And there, yeah, and there could be some that, you know, you know, real lightweight thing that happens between two people and they never call us.
Right.
We wouldn't know about that.
Right, right. Okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. All right. Thank you.
And one quick question before we ask for public comment, uh, probably for Mike Selling. Um, just to clarify in, um, my memory, when we repeatedly considered the recommendations, uh, the various recommendations for Corillian, uh, they all had varying suggestions for controls. And, you know, the most talked about was eleven roundabouts. Regardless of what the controls were, was it not the case that all of those plans said these would be the controls which would go into place when the thresholds were met?
Correct. Under that plan, if that alternative was approved.
Okay, so none of those were to just go ahead and put in roundabouts, lights, or stop signs at that time?
No, it would, it would have to meet the criteria or the warrants, correct?
Okay, thanks.
That's quite literally the reason for the warrants, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So is there any public comment for this item, Madam Clerk?
Uh, one comment, Bonnie Rodriguez.
I don't know. I break everything. Um, uh, to be clear, I'm here because I'm a neighbor right there. I I'm not affiliated with anything else. I mean, not speaking on behalf of anything else. Um, I can attest, though, I live a little bit over a block away from the Elk Hills and Corillian. Um, and we hear screech marks all the time. So I don't know what's going on, but I mean, and and maybe it's big enough and designed big enough so that it they're not having as many internet, um, things. But I am here because I can quite literally say, looking around the room, probably looking around to every single council member over the last five years, every single city staff member over the last five years since this has been, I am the sole person who has been in every single one of these meetings regarding this plan. And don't kid yourself, the the a hundred percent, the premise behind even starting this plan was air quality. That's what the grant was for, and that was what this was supposed to solve. This was one of those resolutions to solve that. And part of that was to encourage people to get out of their cars, widen it so people can get into the EV vehicles or get on their bikes. So here here we are. Um, well, let me back up a little bit. I completely understand all of the studies that were done, and I appreciate all the staff time and everybody who went into it. And I really apologize to this poor firm, because this has been a heated topic for the last five years. You stepped into a hornet's nest, not your fault. Um, but right now, the state or whoever the powers that be are encouraging people to get out of their cars. And so we get these incentives to build bike lanes. I can tell you right now, the Pete, the reason why you don't have the pedestrian count is because no one feels safe crossing those. Like Kevin, you probably remember being on the elementary board during all this. What was the big complaint? Traffic around the schools. Why is there so much traffic around the schools? No one's walking. They're neighborhood schools. They're within walking distance. You have parents literally getting in their car, crossing Corillian to go to Marengo, dropping kids off and coming back. And they're they're a block away. They're not walking it because it's not safe. One of those things, if you build it, they will come. They set up a system, put in bike lanes, so people will use more bikes. I am challenging the city, and I'm challenging everybody, the state, whoever it needs to be, put in safe pedestrian routes? People are going to walk. So I don't know we, why we have an incentive to put in bike lanes, but we don't have an incentive to go beyond our warrants for pedestrians. Because I can tell you, almost every single neighbor around me would send their kids walking down the street to cross to get over to McCaffrey. Mom and dad don't want to get up and get dressed to take their kids to school. If they can get them to go and walk, they'll do, especially those McCaffrey kids. They're all, I mean, they're all going to one school. So I challenge maybe a, you know, a little bit of forethought that we put in the safety measures at those key intersections. And no one's talked about Elk Hills. I'm a little prejudiced. I challenge you that that is a really unsafe area, too, and kids are crossing um, to get over to McCaffrey. So anyway, I just wanted to put that in there and just let everybody know. Thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Mayor, we did receive two more comment, three more comments.
Thank you.
Jerry Soder.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm another Galt resident that's been following the Carillion, uh, safety improvements. And I just took a few notes from some of the comments, uh, that were made and also from Chief Kalonoski's presentation. Um, I kind of divided it up into kind of what we're not getting and what we're gaining. So some of the areas that we're not getting, we know Lake Canyon kind of fails at school dismissal. We're not getting, we're kind of asking how we ended up with this four-way stop at Vintage Oak. And I would agree because I think that would flunk their requirements for a stop sign. I appreciate Councilmember, um, Farmer's comments about as we build out other developments. So what I'm hearing as someone who lives on Vauxhall, my house was in your presentation, the roof of it. As we get that development down on Simmerhorn, I could be in a position where I'm waiting for lots and lots of cars to go and I'm not going to feel safe exiting. Now I've, I'm fine. I would agree. Vauxhall may not need a, a, a four-way stop. So I'm really concerned about the future as far as where this goes. The beacons, I know we've had issues with the beacons and them not being connected to power. So I question the, the reliability. I think I remember sometimes they didn't work because batteries were, were dead. Maybe that's old news, but I would, I would worry about that. And then the limited view, I do agree that sometimes coming, uh, south on Carillion, the view, uh, as you approach Vauxhall is a little bit obstructed. And so that could make pedestrians feel unsafe. What are we getting? Um, I see that we're getting the, the pavement improvement. There are some kind of rough spots, um, down on the south end where I live of Carillion. We're getting the improved bike lane. We're getting it completed, um, because there's areas where it doesn't, uh, go all the way. Uh, we're not getting, uh, the roundabouts. I, I support those in areas where the intersections may fail. I also thought it was interesting that the roundabouts were the hotspot for traffic. So they, one, one plus is another minus. We're not getting lane reductions. I think the community made it very clear. They didn't want road diets or reductions. And, um, my one was minimal disruption to residents. Putting in a roundabout is disruptive. Some paint and some reconfiguring is less disruptive to the residents if that results in some improvement. So do I have an opinion one way or the other? Maybe it doesn't go far enough in some areas, but, um, I think we need to do something because we've been talking about this for five years. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there one more?
Two more. Uh, Ralph Cortez.
So I just have a, a little feedback, um, and only because it kind of upsets me a little bit when I'm driving down Carillion and north and south. And it's the blinking lights. There's a, there's a tremendous amount of people and I'm not sure if we just need to figure out a way to bring awareness that that little button is something that they could push and it would activate. And I'm extremely careful in that particular area for that reason because whether it's a, a youngster and, and in a lot of cases it's adults, walking dogs. And there've been a few times where I've commented, you know, a slowdown, hey, if you push the button, you're going to have a much safer crosswalk. So all I wanted to just say was that if there's any way or whatever we can do to draw attention that an individual could just simply reach over, hit the button and everything flashes. And then there's a situation where if the individual's not paying attention, that's the driving person that's driving and there's an incident, those lights were flashing. I was curious, and I understand it's not interaction, but I was curious what it costs. And in that particular area, there's two consecutive, black blinking lights, uh, right next to the, uh, to the park. I was curious what it costs to put those in. And it's just, it's disheartening not to see individuals using them. And when I bark out the window saying, hey, you can just push the button, all I get is laughing. They'll, they'll laugh at me. So if we can figure out a way to draw attention to those buttons, get the pedestrians to use those more, that, that's just the feedback I have.
Madison, oh, sorry.
No, you go ahead. You're correct.
Madison Delbrug.
Hi, Council. Um, I'm putting on my Realtor hat today. As you guys know, Realtors are driving around town all the time. I'm constantly showing houses, um, on the east side and on those minor streets off Carillion. Um, and my husband and I worked on a project on a house over by, um, Vintage Oak. So we were driving up and down Carillion multiple times a day for a period of about six months. I think we all can agree that it's a pretty dangerous, um, street. People drive fast. The median, although beautiful, I do feel like takes away from some of the safety, especially turning onto Carillion from the side streets. It is hard to see, especially when you're crossing three lanes. My husband and I, driving a few different times, have had really close experiences where, um, someone on a bike, you know, pulls out in front of us or, you know, we're driving on Carillion, not even turning onto Carillion from a side street. Um, and there's pedestrians or bikers that are, you know, going across the street and they're hard to see. I don't know what the solution is and I know the number, the numbers maybe don't suggest, um, doing certain things. But in some situations, I'm sure you guys can agree that despite the numbers, sometimes a decision is made, um, just for safety purposes, like Bonnie and others have said. Um, I think it's important to not just make a quick decision on this, but think about other possible solutions, taking down the trees in the median. So that way the visibility is better from the side streets. Um, I don't know who makes the decisions on the speed limit on those streets or putting in, um, maybe what are those things called that slow down traffic? I don't know.
Speed bumps?
Speed bumps. Um, near the minor streets, I personally was a big fan of the 11 roundabouts that most of the city thought was absolutely horrible. But I think this roundabouts do a good job of slowing down traffic. Um, but I do feel, think that something needs to be done on those minor streets. Vauxhall and Lake Canyon probably get the most traffic, although the numbers don't support doing something. I think we should continue to look at this. The blinking lights are nice. We just have to remind people to use it. But yeah, I, I think that this is a serious concern. I think that there is more that we, we could do on this. And if we're spending the money, like Councilmember Farmer said, I think it's important we spend it wisely and, you know, think ahead. Um, but that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last one? Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd like to say, even though, you know, it may not appear so, uh, because of my efforts to try to keep the movie, meeting moving along, I am actually a, a big supporter of almost everything Councilman Farmer said. Uh, I frequent that str- uh, corridor often. And I find it very difficult, both in cars and walking, to cross the street. Uh, I feel unless you're going to be in a roundabout or something, it's, it's, you have to be on your toes more there than other parts of the city that I frequent. Um, I, elderly people that are cautious with their vehicle, I'm surprised there's not more accidents, but you know, the numbers speak for themselves. So having said that, I, I think that having the flashing crossing signals and/or adding, uh, center islands is a really inexpensive, uh, safety feature to add, you know? My favorite safety saying is, "Safety is only important as long as it's convenient." I like it because it's actually very true. If safety is not convenient or soon as it becomes inconvenient, people cheat and that's when people get hurt. And that's, that's often how you feel inching out into traffic. On, uh, anywhere up and down Carillion Boulevard, unless there's a stop sign, even then sometimes run them, but that's beside the point. So, I would be very much in support of, we actually fought very hard to put a stop sign as you, Mike is quite aware of. And, um, so I, I would just, you know, say that if you could put the flashing beacons in the center mediums, I don't know that it's possible with the turn signals. Or if that was, you know, the crosswalk was moved to the other side of the intersection to accommodate an island for safety, I think that would be very good. I would rather see two or three or four of the flashing beacons. I know there's, you know, some statistics about too many. So I would just guess I'm just saying I would be an advocate for those. Is there any other comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, sir.
Briefly, um, and this is, um, this is for David. I'll, I'll tell you, I've lived in that area and frequented that area for a long time and, um, frequented it for about 20 years. And I never thought about, I always complained in my own mind about the two, um, flashing trail crossings, about how that, how unnecessary it was, but I never thought about, why don't we just remove one? Makes sense, right? I mean, as a driver, now as a, as a pedestrian, I liked both because I could go on the south trail on the west side of the roadway and then go over and use it, the north trail to go to the park. But my question is this, um, and I think the south, keeping the south trail is the correct, uh, way to go. But my question is, how did you determine which one, um, you would recommend to remove? And I say that because the north trail has the main entrance to the big community park. And the south trail has a trail entrance into a neighborhood. So how did you determine which one?
So thank you for the question, Mayor, members of the council. Um, we looked at the visibility of the crosswalks and due to the vertical and horizontal curvature of Carillion, the south crosswalk is more visible to motorists and that was one of the primary reasons. There is good both, uh, crosswalk, um, off-street pathway connections between the two trails. And there's also the sidewalks along Carillion. So there is good connectivity between the two that does support going to one. But it was the, the motorist visibility of the crosswalk was the primary reason for keeping the south crossing.
Okay. And, uh, just a comment, um, I, I, I appreciate that. And, but just a comment on cyclists. I think by at least doing something with that bike lane, we're going to get those cyclists off the sidewalks because that's where they are. And, uh, pedestrians like myself, I don't, I don't cycle, um, but I am a pedestrian on that roadway quite frequently. I'm having to constantly keep an eye out for cyclists. And I think that, that help with the bike lane might, might do it, um, at least to some degree, right?
Yes, sir. That, that is a primary concern that you hear from the bicycling community is that, um, a four-foot bike lane or a five-foot bike lane that includes the gutter, they really frown upon because it does give you that uneven edge, that joint where they come together and it's right in the middle of the lane. So the, the recommendation we have to increase that asphalt by a foot gives us a full four feet of asphalt for, for the bicyclists to utilize and hope to encourage their, their use of that, of it, as you suggest.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment, Clerk?
No public comment.
Thank you. So nothing else from council?
Mr. Mayor, uh, just for, oh, first of all, you know, this project, uh, everybody knows, uh, from last fourth year, we will take this. My comment is not means I'm not going to support this one. A couple of years ago, we all considered, uh, but agreed to that. But that's kind of concerning, same thing. I want to make sure our public know that. The neighbors live on that area, they know that. They know what I'm trying to do, what their wishes. But at the end of the day, yes, in staff recommendation, uh, uh, I will agree with that. But my, but one thing about the cost, Mike, uh, $365,000. That's just preliminary engineering on this, uh, plan. Or you, and the other thing you said, this plan is not a long-term plan. This is just a short-term plan. And, and, and the, my other, uh, question is, on that area or Carillion Boulevard, we all know the traffic are going to increase. You know, Eastview, the people can come on Marengo, they can come on a Carillion, they can go to. And there Elliot's home, 150 to 100, they're coming very soon. The other, the area between Vauxhall and the Simmerhorn, they are under city now. And cities' attention to, don't intend to any annexate. We want to make sure infill all the houses. And you know, as your experience, I know, the people can come down to try to buy their land and they can build the houses. It's can we build the houses or whatever. That's the only area we have right now to building any business or any most likely houses. But I'm talking with the long-term. I, I, I understand you said this is a short-term. I does not want a, this is a taxpayers' money. We spend something that much money and then after six, seven year, we have to do something long-term. So when that plan come to, we can vote on that. Please just keep on, on that, what we can include in the long-term. Uh, the, and, and could you might be explain to their report, uh, the engineering, $365,000. Uh, that's can be, this is the approximate. This is in-house, we are doing this one or we can be contracting out, uh, to the outsources. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Couple of questions and then I'll try to remember them. Um, to address the 365,000, that's our budget amount, uh, for the engineering, uh, for the corridor to basically come up with a final plan specifications and estimate, uh, to then put it out for a construction bid. Uh, so that's what that is for. I can't remember. Did you ask something else about that 365?
No, that's I, I just want to ask because this is a short-term plan. We can spend to make that plan and if we have make any other kind of maybe long-term plan, is that, and can we include some of our money in the long-term?
Yeah. And, and thank you for that question because that's a great point that we would definitely want to, you know, uh, I guess emphasize. This plan, this near term, what we're calling near term, short term, whatever you want to call it, kind of thing, we're talking for the next several years, maybe 10, 15 years even, depending on how fast things go. Right? Because nobody knows how the economy is going to go and all that. So we're talking near term. But this plan, what we're talking about here for these improvements, there's no throwaway. So that's what I would want to emphasize. There's no throwaway. That's why we're keeping the existing corridor. That's why that option four is not, you know, basically fell off the table very quickly because it's very expensive and it's potentially, you know, there would be throwaway depending on what's done in the long-term. But again, as far as a long-term plan, any long-term plan is going to need to come before the council. Uh, we're not going to go try to put in a bunch of roundabouts or something like that, obviously without council approval or signalize an intersection. I mean, those are significant changes that will require, you know, construction contracts at the very least, but probably design and whatnot as well. So there will be opportunities for the council to essentially provide direction as we, you know, develop this corridor in the longer term.
Right. Then my next question in, uh, on this, you recommending, I believe, uh, alternative one is, is make this line to 11 feet, right? Because right now there are two lanes, right? I think one is 12 feet, the other is 11 feet.
Correct.
So that we're getting one foot and we're making that lane narrow only one, right?
Correct.
And how much do you believe in the traffic can slow down? On, on, we, we narrowed to only one lane because that's we can afford. And our focus is the traffic go slow down or, or our folks' main focus to make the bike line wider? What are our main focus?
It's, they're really kind of in tandem, if you will, but I mean, obviously they're both safety enhancements. So it's kind of a, you know, a, a hand in glove, so to speak. You narrow the lane, you get some traffic, uh, motorist speed reduction. And I think Dave can correct me, but I think it's right around three miles an hour is what, um, the data has suggested to go from a 12-foot lane to an 11-foot lane. And that would be the inside lane, uh, the leftmost lane. And that's typically where you get your faster drivers, uh, because slower drivers tend to stay to the right. So in a four-lane road, they're going to stay on the, uh, the right lane, depending on which direction they're going in. So, so we would, we would expect about a three mile an hour reduction in that. And, and like I said, it is kind of, you know, there's a symbiotic, if you will, you know, connection there. You, you narrow that lane and then you gain that space on the bicyclist. You, you narrow that lane and then you gain that space on the cyclist lane. So you, as, as Councilmember Lozano was noting, you know, bicyclers that are on the sidewalks that they're going to hopefully feel safer to get out there in that bike lane. They aren't going to have that joint between the concrete gutter lip and the edge of the asphalt to, you know, deal with as they're trying to navigate down the road with cars going 40, 45 plus miles an hour beside them. So they've got a little more room, you know, to, to maneuver in or have some cushion, if you will, so.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Kent, Mr. Papadou.
I almost got hit by a bike on Corillian sidewalk yesterday, near miss. I don't know, it's just kind of anecdotal. I was inclined to want the speed reduction of the 10 and a half foot lanes, but now I would be inclined to side with the fire department's opinion and support that. And it certainly doesn't make any sense to try and make any improvements without redoing the asphalt because it's going to fail and all of our new paint will go away. So that gets down to the cost and it's noted in their grant applications to cover about half.
Yeah, there were grant limitations. I'm going to probably look to my city engineer, he's got the details on that, but there were, I think there were cap, dollar caps on the grants, depending on the programs, and so we were trying to stay within those caps, but John?
That is correct. We were looking at, with the funding sources available, what could we think would be most competitive? Small city asking for a $6 million grant, five, six million for the entire Corillian, that if we applied for that to the CACOG maintenance modernization category, that would have not qualified, that would have thrown us into a different threshold. And now we're asking for more than what we'd likely get and be competing against City of Sacramento, City of Elk Grove, who would look much, their application would be much more receptive by CACOG versus ours. So we, we kind of wanted to tailor it to where we thought we would be competitive and not, to not put us in a bad position against the larger cities.
And it was mentioned that issue of bike lanes or improvements of bike lanes is kind of a good thing to have when you're seeking a grant. And I do think that, you know, that it's only an extra foot, but adding the green, I think would make it more noticeable for drivers and also add the, the safety feeling. If we were to, we talked about the buffer, but that's not in the recommendation, what would that consist of? Is that like a raised item or what?
There's, there's a couple of different buffers and I'm going to probably look to the consultants to, to expand on this, I know enough to be dangerous on this, but you can have essentially paint, just a visual, if you will, buffer. You can also do kind of like the larger bots dots. Sometimes you'll see what we call delineators, the kind of the little skinny little plastic sticks used. Sometimes you can see curbs, use extruded curbs to kind of have that physical barrier. But beyond that, Todd, you want to weigh in?
Todd Trigenza, also with GHD, Mayor, council members, thank you. Yeah, the buffer was simply paint in this case, but you could put vertical delineators in it, which kind of look like, you know, posts, white posts or different colored posts if you wanted to later add some sort of physical separation between the cyclist and the cars. But yeah, you could, you could pour a full curb if you wanted to, there's fully protected bike lanes, but this one is just paint, so it'd be a painted buffer.
All right. That was just my question is what, what you guys were envisioning with that part?
One thing we also looked at too is our street sweeper. If we would have put the delineators in, you know, four feet, five feet from the edge of curb, the street sweeper would no longer be able to sweep along the gutter pan, they would be only in the lanes. So we take that into account. I don't know if you've driven up, if you've been on Franklin Boulevard as you go from North Elk Grove into Sacramento, those delineators are there, they're too narrow and the street swepers cannot get in and that's where all the trash accumulates and that's something that we wanted to avoid.
Thank you. Well, just to sum it up, I guess, we went through long discussions and this is what plan we, we settled on and I'm certainly happy to ask the staff to move forward toward completion. And all that said, I'm, you know, while I can't come with just putting down a stop sign because I certainly encourage the further research and anything we can do to think about, especially the Lake Canyon Crossing, you know, if a safety island is, is, you know, a possible design change or some flashing light there in the middle, I think those would all be, you know, we certainly shouldn't rule anything out. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything else from council? If not, Mike, do you need any further clarification on any particular item?
No, we're good, thank you. This was, like I said, primarily an update to kind of, you know, let the council know that we haven't forgot about this, we've been working on it and we're progressing. We're hopeful to get some money and we'll, we'll definitely keep you informed, so, as we progress.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to communication. City clerks report?
Then this evening.
Comments by staff?
No, it doesn't look like we have any comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Comments by city?
Could I?
Sorry.
I just have one quick update.
And before you start, I just wanted to let council know that even though we have council meetings, city operations are still going on. And so over the last hour, I've been working with Congresswoman Matsui's office on potential grant opportunities for Walker Park. So in case you're wondering why your city manager has a case of the...
Hot seat?
Thank you. That's what was going on and it needed to be in by 8:59 our time.
Thank you. And I can verify that there were several grants that you had basically 24 hours and a little bit
Yeah.
out of courtesy to get completed, which is no easy task.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to know that and I think Director Selling has comments as well.
Just two quick items. On the water flushing that I mentioned, I think a couple of meetings ago, we've essentially completed that. I think there's a few minor cul-de-sacs where we've got to finish up where we couldn't get access because of a parked vehicle or something, but other than that, we're all good. All the city water lines have been flushed, so that's, effort's completed. And, and then the other thing is, and I think there's been some other updates on this, just real quick on the pool heaters. So the good news is the heater came in last week and the contractor is busy getting it all installed and everything and we should be good to go for the galt gators. I think we just need an air district is going to be coming by, I think later next week to, to check it, you know, and give it the, the all-clear. And so we should be good for, for the gators, I think by whatever it was, I think the first week in April? Sound right?
April 11th is...
11th. Okay. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Next up, Chief Kalanowski.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to respond to the issue about the canine proposal out of legislature. Cal chiefs who represents all the police, municipal police agencies in California has a lobbyist that is tracking that item. Historically, over the last couple of years, about three years ago, they were monitoring about 22% of the bills in Sacramento that had impacts to law enforcement. Last year, that went down into the mid-teen digits and this year it's less than 10%. As a police chief, I consider that a victory because for a while it was, you know, I don't know if I should use the word hot mess, but there was a lot going on there. So we, I know Cal chiefs has about six items that they are sponsoring legislation on, one of those I talked about earlier, which related to Prop 47 and other items. As these things move forward, I will communicate with the city manager if there's an item that needs a resolution or support from council. All these bills are far from final form and will be get beat down in some fashion, hopefully. And then lastly, obviously, we had that shooting that happened last week? Was it last week? I lose track. Anyways, last night, we shared this with the paper, so I'm sharing it with council. Last night, we conducted a search warrant attempting to ID our suspect and with that search warrant, recovered some evidence and some other things that we're still analyzing. So that, that case continues to move forward. That's really, we're not trying to be coy or play games, it's really just all we can share without jeopardizing the investigation, so I hope people understand that. But my staff has worked hard through the weekend and long hours to get resolution and get some movement on that. And hopefully we can get somewhere where I have better news for you, but I wanted you to know the things we're moving forward in that regard. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, do you have any update on the, the young man that's still in the hospital?
So he's still in the hospital, he's in critical and so I'm not sure about his rehabilitation, you know, how that's going to look long-term, but he's still in critical condition is what I'm told.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for staff, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is comments by city council members, future agenda items. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for staff, give us a good report, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for the public comment. Everybody's public comment is my heart, so I take very carefully in thinking what the public comments are. I also, as a mayor mentioned or city manager mentioned, yesterday I met with Congresswoman Doris Mathew, along with mayor and city manager. She is a representative of California 7th District. For first time, this is covering our galt, because due to the district, so she's the district 7. We discussed our goals and challenges with her, including unhoused, Mayfair, galt market plan at Walker Park. And she's very eager to help us, as city manager mentioned, he's working on with him the grants. And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papadou.
I believe we have an upcoming agenda item regarding a further presentation from the chamber. I'm correct about that? Did we put that on last time?
Council directed that when we bring back the rest of the ARPA request, staff proposals for the ARPA dollars, that we were to bring back the conversation about the chamber's request. I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if the chamber's going to be presenting, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm bringing the issue before council for continued discussion. The chamber is here or they're listening, they're welcome as anyone else to make a presentation or be here to answer questions. I'll let Amy Mendez coordinate that, but as far as I'm concerned, I was directed to bring it back for further discussion.
All right. I just wanted to clarify what we had coming back already. What I'd like to request is that as we move forward with our discussions of partnership with the chamber, that we discuss forming an ad hoc committee. Ms. Mendez, two of us and representatives from the chamber, if anybody would join me in that endeavor.
I would support that. Anybody else? Mr. Lozano as well? So that makes three.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
Not to get into discussion on that, I just would be curious of what the ad hoc committee purpose would be. Would you care to elaborate, Kevin, on your vision of that?
Yeah, just to determine, and we kind of started discussing, you know, that they would get part of the hotel tax, TOT. You know, obviously they wanted the whole half hundred dollars of ARPA funds that they were talking about. And as our discussion went down the road toward, you know, what's our partnership going to look like and what are the expectations from both sides with, you know, their plan moving forward? So it's, doesn't have a fine point on it, but I think that trying to determine that partnership in a forum like this, well, will quite frankly lead to that garbage contract that we don't like to talk about. So I think if we could put together a committee, ad hoc committee, we could hopefully put together a good plan that both sides are going to appreciate and be able to work within for this partnership, you know, not just for an immediate startup of, you know, a tourism visitor center, but of the relationship going forward for decades or whatever.
Thank you. I just, I just want to make sure that we, I know there's a time limit on that, you know, ARPA money and stuff, and I know that ad hoc committees can tend to delay things, so if that was the case, it's as long as it was, you know, an expedited process. Is that all you had? I'm sorry. Oh, is...
Yeah, that was...
Okay. All right. A couple of comments I just wanted to mention. One is, I've had a lot of people recently, business owners, express their dissatisfaction in our handling of business licenses. I know we farmed out that recently. I myself, same experience. My business in a renewal process, well, actually I shouldn't say my business, one of my family members in a business, my father-in-law specifically, was asked for a certain document over and over saying it wasn't this, wasn't that. It's the same document we had provided to City of Galt for a long period of time. I've had other people come to me and they just said that the customer service is just poor. I'm not really that pleased, the fact that our finance department is as big as it is and we had to farm out those services. I think that being a service organization, I think we're doing a disservice. I would like to see that come back and, or at least have some reasoning behind why that is and look into these, these issues that I'm getting complaints on. So second item would be, as we all know, the floodwaters down at the Dry Creek have created what I would consider no less than an environmental disaster. It looks like a landfill down there with all the stuff, debris just spread all over in the trees and the bushes and things, and I know that's not our property, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, I think pure of reclamation or something or other. The problem is that we have Lower Sacramento Road as one of the entrance points to our city. It's probably highly used by people entering our city and the first thing they see when they come into our city is that. And all the stuff that's happening on the, on the San Wicking County side of the bridge, I know San Wicking County don't really care about that because it's kind of out of sight out of mind, but it matters to Galt. I would like staff to maybe look into, you know, lighting a fire under San Wicking County to be involved in the cleanup of what that looks like entering on their side and if we have to get whatever involved with whatever entity is, is in charge of the creek bed to see if there's any plan. What are the plans to clean that up? Is there any plans to do so? What can we do? Because it can't just be like that. I've lived in this town my whole life and it's disgusting to drive into town and see that. So I just want to bring those two things up. And I wanted to make also another comment about the comments that were made by Mr. Kegel regarding the G Y B. I think this public should know that it's a very precarious situation and the mayor, I think, really, you know, injected himself into that, that debacle and tried to do the best he could. And it's a very, you know, when you, when it's a small town, you know all the people that are involved, which I do as well, and trying to find some mediation. It's a shame that the council even had to be involved in that, but I just want to say that, you know, I, I felt bad that the mayor, you know, kind of got a little flak for that. I think, you know, his intentions were very good and there's a bigger problem at hand than just, than just, you know, what's going on. There's a bigger problem to solve with, with the field and stuff. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate the mayor's efforts with, you know, trying to do that and, you know, his, his intentions were good. But that's all I have for this evening. Thanks again for the reports. Thank you, Chief, for a good report. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to, first of all, thank the public for coming and making the public comment tonight. I don't say that very often, but I think we, you know, we had some very good public comment input about what we're doing and how things are moving forward. I also want to thank staff for all the attention that I have gotten from you in the last two weeks. I think, I'm looking at my calendar and I've had two or three Zoom meetings with staff members about things and met with Parks and Rec, met with the IT department, Mike Sellen and I, and Matt, and we've all been exchanging emails. So thank you for your patience and your understanding of my, my questions and concerns. I want to thank Armando specifically for bringing this specific... concerns. I want to thank Armando specifically for bringing this specific item of field allocation to the Park and Rec Commission and getting that ball moving. I think that that's where this needs to lie, at least in the interim, until we can get some resolution. And I appreciate your efforts as well as your staff. I've met with a lot of people about field allocations. In fact, today I met with a couple. And so, but thank you for moving that forward and doing what you're doing on that. Lastly, I just want to make mention, I got a call from Belinda Ellis today, who is the manager, general manager of the cemetery district here. And she has a request and I was going to refill it, but I am out of the area that day. On next Tuesday, the 28th, FEMA is coming to the cemetery to, to do an evaluation of her claims of disaster, from the disaster. And she told me today that it's looking like well over a million dollars worth of damage and partly because their irrigation system was literally uprooted by the trees and is beyond, at least the initial thought is that it's beyond repair and they're going to have to replace it. And so her question was, or her request is that one of the council members or the mayor attend out there at nine o'clock on Tuesday, the 28th, out at the cemetery with her, the staff and a couple of their board members in an effort to show support for the cemetery district with our federal partners. And so if anybody's able to do that, that would be greatly appreciated. Like I said, I'm up in Sacramento on a conference all day, but, or I would do it. So.
Mr. Mayor, if you can't make that, I would be happy to do that in your place if you can't.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm burning through vacation faster than.
That's why I suggested. So just let me know if you, you need me to do that for sure? Or do you want to get back?
No, no. If you would take care of that, that would be helpful. And I'll let, Belinda asked that I let her know who's going to be there.
And nine, nine o'clock, you said?
Nine o'clock on Tuesday, the 28th, out at the cemetery on Joy.
Thanks.
And I think that's all I had. And I would be in support of an ad hoc. I would agree with Councilman Farmer that it shouldn't take, it shouldn't drag out, but I think it is important that we sit down. And I had a wonderful conversation with the chamber president this last week about my thoughts about that. And so I think the expectations of how that would work are, are, are out there. So that's all I have. And do we need to bring that back at the next meeting to form an ad hoc, Frank, or?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's why I asked for three, but thank you. Okay. So that leaves me. I'm curious about the spraying of weeds in the, in the, along the streetscapes. I noticed, you know, it's first day of spring has come and gone and the weeds are growing in haste. Last year, there was much to do about certificates. You know, do we have anybody that's qualified? Is there a schedule for them?
We have three people ready to take the test. It's very difficult to get information from the state and when they, when and where they can go. We've attempted several times. They told us to quit calling them because we've called them too much and they finally sent us a list of test dates.
Is, is it required that it's tested through specific vendors, so to speak?
I'm not sure the vendor. They gave us a list of...
We couldn't go to San Joaquin County or, or anywhere, San Francisco?
It's a state test. It's not a county test.
Okay. So no ETA?
No, we thought we had it in here with the local area, but they only do the agricultural part of the spraying, not the, the one that we require.
Okay. The baseball MOU, I'd actually, I'm going to ask council for support. And I guess, you know, Councilman Lozano mentioned field allocations. The gentleman that spoke that bit a little bit, but that's exactly what we're, they're supposed to do. You know, my intention wasn't to leave people out. It was actually to make sure that everybody got a, a piece of the pie. We actually stuck with the existing schedule that G Y B had instead of switching to an alternative schedule, which I actually preferred the alternative schedule, but it just shifted more people around. So it wasn't my intention at all to leave anybody out. I, I think the rain did more to leave anybody out than myself. My intention was to include everybody and I thought we had that solved. Correct me if I'm wrong, even though we did all this effort, no one has actually played on probably any field. It's been consistent rain and slop throughout.
G Y B was able to have games so far.
Very good for them. Okay. So could I get any support for bringing back the MOU to discuss its alteration if necessary?
I, I think I like the suggestion. I mean, I know we kind of, this would be kind of a roundabout backwards way to do it, but, you know, I really think that the Parks and Rec Commission should have, could have cut it, should step up and take a little bit of a role. I think it's not fair that the council should have to deal with that. I'd like to see them. They're an entity we've appointed. Maybe they could dive into that and then they can come to council with their suggestions on what things they think should be done.
Fair enough. My, my main goal is to get it addressed permanently, long-term. So I'm actually glad that you brought that up, Councilman Lozano. So I'll just let that go then. Thank you, Mike, for, you know, the, some of the items that were on the agenda and the, what's the first, calendar items. Thank you for the deep repairs the city needs. I know our water system has done quite well over the last couple of years, but I think often citizens don't realize that some of the deeper road repairs, some of the deep water wells and repairs in, in pump stations, they often just, they just go overlooked. And, you know, thank you for taking, addressing them ahead of time before they burned down and caused muddy streets, so to speak. Oh, on, on that, chief, on that shooting, is there a, a social media post that's been put out by the police?
No, we will.
Okay.
On that update I just gave you right now, we will get something out tomorrow. And I'll, that's fresh info. And during the meeting, I found out we had let the Herald know. So I wanted you guys to know before it was in the Herald.
Okay.
That's why I told you tonight.
Yeah, I'll be looking for it. Thank you, sir.
And you, if you can, since I told the world, you can share it. Doesn't matter.
I'll, I'll wait for the, I'll wait for the official word.
Okay, fair enough. All right.
I just, it's just good to share it. You know, I think we, we helped spread the word. Really appreciate all the public comment. It's, it's gotten better lately and I, I do appreciate it. Mr. Farmer, you mentioned business licenses. Are you asking for support to bring that back as a topic? Because we didn't actually go through that process.
Well, I think that decision to, to farm that out was made by the city manager at his discretion, which he had obviously the right to do. So I wasn't aware that was done until we had to deal with it firsthand. But it's just become a frequent topic with business owners to me. And so I would like to assess, I would like to just bring it back and, as a, as a future agenda item at some point. It's not an urgent rush.
Could I, could I, could I get support from council to just get a report from city staff on the business licensing, the money we save?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
I would support that, but I would also encourage my colleagues to reach out to Mr. Boring. I've also had several individuals contact me who are trying to obtain renewed business licenses and they found it a little difficult. His staff, he and his staff got on it right away and ensured that a new business license was mailed out as well as emailed to the, to the folks that I, and in a very quick manner. In fact, one person thanked, thanked the staff because they, they handled it so quickly.
Thank you, sir. As far as the trash on Lower, do you have something to add? No. Okay. As far as the trash on Lower Sacramento Bridge, I, I concur with Mr. Farmer very much. So I've mentioned in the past repeatedly that we have had, I think, four fires in the past two or three years. And now with the recent storms and heavy rain, we've had, I'm going to guess, seven trees that have just fallen over. There's a lot of garbage from homeless people. They continue to use it even in this kind of weather and even though there's water all the way across the bridge, for the most part, there, I still see smoke coming up from morning fires for heat or food. I don't know. But I'm very concerned that there's going to be an excessive amount of fuel and there will always be a need for the homeless to use it in manners that aren't the wisest when they aren't the sharpest. So that could be addressed in somehow. I know it's not easy. It just, it's going to be a problem, you know? And finally, thank you to staff for putting up with all of it. We bark a lot. It's, it's for all the right reasons. I do appreciate all the work that you guys do. It's a lot of material to read sometimes, but it also gives me confidence that you've done the, the kind of things necessary to help protect the city and do things in the correct manner. And with that said, I'll end the meeting at 9:20. Good night.